Let's go ahead and settle down and the chair detects the quorum. So I want to go ahead and call the September ninth, 2021 Planning Commission meeting to order. Appreciate everybody coming in. Just a few housekeeping items before we get started. First of all, masks are required, and that's because of the mayor's executive order number 21 that was issued on August 5th. And so we appreciate everybody wearing that. There are some medical exceptions, so if that's an issue, please, we'll come talk to you and ask you to wear a mask. If you don't have one, if you have a medical condition, just state that to them, and we appreciate that. So thank you very much for that. Commissioners, it's good to be back with you again with a new microphone system. This may not seem like a big deal to you all, but it is a very big deal for us when we have to defer items because our microphone system's not working for public comment. That is a problem for us. So we're very excited about the new system. So I want to do make a note to the commissioners. When you push the speak button, don't push it twice immediately because then it will not work, and then we have to reset the system. Now, it doesn't take very long to do that, but you can, you push it and then let it be, and then push it again to turn it off. So appreciate your doing that, and we'll work through that tonight. So I appreciate commissioners doing that. So first, commissioners, is item B, which is the adoption of the agenda which was sent out, and the commissioners, you've had that in front of you. Are there any? We'll need a motion to approve the agenda unless there's a motion. Is there a second? Second, any discussion on the agenda? Addition, edits? Seeing no, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Eyes have it, and the agenda is adopted. Item C, which is the approval of the August 26, 2021 minutes, and that was also given to you prior to the meeting.
Hi, Chairman Atkins, apologies. I did want to note that the, the length of the meeting is taking us a little bit longer to get those minutes done, so we actually didn't get those sent out, but they'll be included on the next agenda.
Okay, so we, we don't have the minutes in front of us then, yet, or correct, on the 26th. Okay, so we'll get that next time. All right, without objection. Next is my favorite, recognition of the council members. So not my favorite, everyone is my favorite, but we are on to the council members. And so we call on the council members as we see you all come in. So I saw a council member gamble. There's for the item. Okay, thank you, council member. Councilman Syracuse, where'd he go? There he is. Come on up. Good to see you. Welcome. Now, it looks, you gotta push, let's see if it, there we go.
See, I don't come here that often.
It's okay. We'll give direct instruction to council members, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, commissioners. Good to see you all. I have items 10, 11, 19, and 21 on your agenda. The first three showed as tentative as far as being on consent, but I'm in favor of those being on consent. They're great projects and have had a lot of community engagement. The one that's not on consent, I look forward to discussing it with you. It's about a reserve clause on a parcel, and I have some neighbors here to discuss that. So I look forward to a productive and educational discussion on a reserve clause when that comes up. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate you coming in. Next, I saw Councilman Hager. Is he? Oh, he did. Okay, he didn't need. Ma'am, are you a council member? I'm just.
When can you request that something be taken off the consent agenda?
Okay, so there's a member of the public asking when something can be taken off the consent agenda, and that's after we hear, after we hear the list. So we'll announce that. We'll go slow. We want to make sure everybody is heard. We're always try to be fair here at the Planning Commission. So thank you for asking. All right, so, all right. Any other council members? Lisa, did I miss? Oh, come on, oh, there, yep, I see Councilman O'Connell. Come on up. Thanks for dressing up today, wearing your tie. I'm just kidding. You know, a former council member could say that stuff about current.
Good afternoon to all the commissioners except the chair. Yeah, I'm still fortunate to be able to work from home right now, so I apologize for not being in a suit unlike some of my colleagues. But no, thank you all for the opportunity, and I regret, I will actually have to step out for a work commitment right after this, and I can't stay for the item, so thank you for the opportunity to dress it ahead of time. I did want to briefly discuss item 2021 DTC 008001, which is the proposal for second and Peabody. This is, this is a tough discussion. Discretion is one of the most difficult aspects of policymaking. In this case, the applicant is seeking a height modification, and there is a standard process for that through the downtown code, but the application far exceeds what would be allowed at the site under the existing bonus height program in the downtown code. Right now, as you all know, Nashville has an extraordinary need for housing. As our urban core, particularly south of Broadway, has begun to fill up with an architectural style known colloquially as Texas wraps or gleaming glass boxes, we also have an extraordinary need for better architecture, better streetscapes, and more open space. Simply put, this proposal delivers many things that our urban core desperately needs. The hard part is that the proposal is for a site that is caught between unlimited height and considerably limited height. As you know, a previous proposal at this site did not go forward. The applicant addressed the fundamental concerns of planning staff, but the community remains concerned about scale. As you know also, I'm rarely at odds with my constituency. As an elected representative for the whole of downtown, I do think approving this project is in the best interest of the city. But as an elected representative too of residents in the area, including those at the City Lights residential community nearby, I would be remiss in not acknowledging their concerns about the extraordinary nature of this request. As staff and the commission deliberate this, you have a lot of discretion. I think one of the most important dimensions of land use policy is to be able to articulate when discretion justifies extraordinary outcomes. In this case, having discussed this project for months and having watched it evolved considerably, I personally feel comfortable with the staff recommendation, but I know many of my constituents don't. And that says to me that we still have a lot of work to do to ensure that our policy conversations themselves are keeping up with Nashville's growth. I've worked closely with staff on some technical updates to policy for the downtown code, but I think we will need a much more inclusive conversation about the nature of downtown, its neighborhoods, and the impact of discretion as we consider the future of the code as a policy tool for our urban core. Thank you all for your service, your time, and your consideration.
Thank you, Councilman, and I appreciate seeing you. It's good to see. I saw Councilman Taylor, who's wearing a suit and tie, Councilman O'Connell. Welcome.
I took Councilmember O'Connell's only suit. He let me borrow it to meet you all today. Thank you, Councilmember O'Connell. Good evening, everyone. I'm here in support of 2021 SP 055001 Clay Street. We came to you all a little over a year ago. I think we were virtual still about this, and it was a straight rezone from CS, excuse me, from RS to CS in a, in a, in a policy doesn't, that doesn't really allow CS. If you look at that block in that corner, there's currently a PUD, Plan Unit Development there to create usages that we necessarily don't want to have in that community. I think that you all will be asking for a community plan amendment on this, is why I think that the staff recommended disapproval. In regards to the community plan amendment, it's neighborhood maintenance, and I think it should stay that, and the reason that I think it should stay that is because as we open up more policy changes in a neighborhood corridor, it opens up for a bit more liberal usages in that corridor. Adding this SP, one of the questions that were asked in the meeting the last time is the, the commissioners would like to see the plans. The plans would be, and sketches would be in your book this time. It's going to be mixed use with retail and apartments. It's, it's, it's on a, on a corridor that's relatively busy, and, and the item, the lot in question, several lots, but the one lot that's actually in question is trying to become parallel with the property across the street from it that's also being permitted to, to be built right now. Currently, that lot is just a hair smaller across the street with two different lots that create one size to, to equal the other lot. So I've spoken with community members. We've had several community meetings on this, not here recently, but over a year ago. Folks are, are pretty much in favor of it, which helps me be a lot more in favor of it if my community members say so. And so I, I see that's going to be disapproved, and unfortunately, I can't stay here. My anniversary was yesterday, but we didn't do anything, so we're going to celebrate tonight. So that's why I'm wearing a suit, to be honest, for my wife. But, but I'll have to go, but I'll ask for your support on this, and, and please just, as you get a chance to discuss it, if you can walk through the sketches of what this will look like on that corner, it'd be beneficial to the area. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember. We appreciate it. And that was item number 12. All right, any other council members? Sometimes they sneak in. I can't. Director, I don't see any other council members. All right, so we'll move on to item E, which is items for deferral or withdrawal. Lisa?
Hi, we have the following items for deferral or withdrawal. Item number 1A, 2007 SP 037002 Blue Road, Bell Road, Blue Hole Road SP Amendment. Staff recommendation is to defer to the October 14th meeting. 1B, the associated case 95P 025007 Millwood Commons PUD cancellation. Staff recommendation is to defer to the October 14th meeting. On page four of your agenda, item number 2, 2009 SP 017003 Kelly Driver Senior Retirement SP. Staff recommendation is to defer to the October 14th meeting. Item number 3, 2021 SP 06001 1300 Hunter's Lane SP. Staff recommendation is to defer to the October 14th Planning Commission meeting. Item number 4A, 2021 CP 007003 West Nashville Community Plan Amendment. Staff recommendation is to defer to the September 23rd Planning Commission meeting. The associated case 4B, 2021 Z 077PR 001. It's a rezoning request on Cowden Avenue. Staff recommendation is to defer to the September 23rd Planning Commission meeting. Item number 5A, 2021 SP 046001 Summit View. It's a request to rezone from R8 to SP for property located on West Summit Avenue. Staff recommendation is to defer to the September 23rd Planning Commission meeting. On page five of your agenda, the associated case 5B, 2779P 001 Communications Tower PUD cancellation. Staff recommendation is to defer to the September 23rd Planning Commission meeting. Item number 6, 2021 Z 086PR 001. It's a rezoning on Glen Cliff Road. Staff recommendation is to defer to the October 14th Planning Commission meeting. Item number 9A, 2021 SP 062001 4321 Old Hickory Boulevard. Staff recommendation is to defer to the September 23rd meeting. On page six of your agenda, the associated case 9B, 12384P 001 South Fork Commercial PUD cancellation. Staff recommendation is to defer to September 23rd. Item 9C, 4586P 003 Grand Wood Village PUD cancellation. Staff recommendation is to defer to the September 23rd meeting. On page seven of your agenda, item number 14, 2021 Z 079PR 001, a rezoning request on Cato Road. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. And on page nine of your agenda, item number 24, 2021 S 169001 Sequoia Valley Reserve Parcels. Staff recommendation is to defer to the September 23rd meeting.
Thank you, Lisa. And so commissioners, the items for deferral withdraw are, or withdraw are items 1A, 1B, 2, 3, 4A, 4B, 5A, 5B, 6, 9A, 9B, 9C, 14, and 24. Is that correct, Lisa?
That is correct.
All right, commissioners, you've heard the items for deferral. We'll need a motion. All right, Commissioner moves approval, and is there a second? And Vice Chair seconds, any discussion for the items for deferral? Seeing no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Eyes have it, and those items are deferred. Lisa, we are on to item F, the consent agenda.
I will be reading through the items that were indicated as tentatively on consent and asking for persons in opposition to raise their hands. If there's anyone in opposition, then an item will be presented. If not, it will be placed on the consent agenda. Item number 8, 2021 CP 005001. Is there anyone in opposition to item number 8? Item number 8 will be.
Hold on, sir. Come up to the microphone and say if you have a question, let's see if we can resolve it while we do this. We just, I, I want to make sure we get everything on public record, so. And state your name.
My name is Dick Murphy, and I'm a property owner on Ambrose Avenue. I own the property at 3009 and 3011, which is immediately south of the, of the property on Ambrose Avenue that's being rezoned, and.
What's the question, sir? What, what is your question?
My question is, if, if this property is rezoned, I'm using that property as, as outside storage, and in the event that this proposal goes through, am I going to be able to use that property from now on as outside storage?
All right, we have a staff member that's going to talk to you for a second. We'll get it. So hold on, we're going to try to resolve this real quick to just, just give us a second.
I'll come back to this one.
Okay, we'll come back. Next.
Okay, the next item, item number 10, 2021 SP 025001. Is there anyone in opposition to item number 10? Okay, that'll be on consent. Item number 11, 2021 SP 036001. Is there anyone in opposition to item number 11? Yes. Oh.
Ma'am, are you in opposition? Are you asking for it to be heard? Come up to the microphone for a second. Commissioners, we have to get through this. I'm sorry, we're trying, trying to resolve these consent agenda items.
My name is Christine.
Oh, wait, hold, no, just if it's, if you're in opposition, then we'll hear it. So if you.
So are you, ma'am, are you in opposition to the item? Item 11?
For it to go through on a consent agenda, yes.
Okay, well, then it'll be heard when it comes to that point on the agenda.
Thank you. All right, Lisa, next.
Okay, item number 13, 2021 SP 058001. If there's anyone in opposition to item number 13, if they could raise their hand. Item number 13. Okay, item number 13 will go on consent. Item number 15, 2021 Z 082PR 001. Is there anyone here in opposition to item number 15? Raise their hand. Okay, item number 15 will go on consent. Item number 16, 2021 Z 087PR 001. Is there anyone here in opposition to item number 16? Item number 18, 2020 S 0.
Hold on, Lisa.
Yeah, I marked it.
Are you, who is the person?
On, on 16, this gentleman raised his hand.
You're in opposition, sir? You want to hear? Okay, he's in opposition. Kick it off, consent.
Item number 18, 2020 S 066001. Is there anyone in opposition to item number 18? Okay. Item number 19, 2021 S 026001. Is there anyone in opposition to item number 19? Item number 20, 2021 S 135001. Is there anyone in opposition to item number 20? Item number 22, 2021 S 143001. Is there anyone in opposition to item number 22? Item number 23, 2021 S 148001. Is there anyone in opposition to item number 23? Chairman, I'll now go through and read all of those captions.
All right, Lisa, so take us through the consent agenda.
Yeah.
What's on, and what's on there?
As information for, for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of the entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. As noticed to our public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items. The following items are on the consent agenda. Joni, where do we fall on 8? Item number 8, 2021 CP 005001 on page 5 of your agenda, East Nashville Community Plan Amendment. It's a request to amend the East Nashville Community Plan by changing from District Employment Center to T4 mixed use policy for various properties along Pittway, East Trinity Lane, Ambrose, and North Hill Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve. On page 6 of your agenda, item number 10, 2021 SP 025001, the Bowen House at Knollmere Place. It's a request to rezone from R10 to SP for property located on Lebanon Pike to permit 68 multifamily units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number 13 on page 7 of your agenda, 2021 SP 058001, Bressard Mechanical SP. It's a request to rezone from IWD to SP for property located on Lemuel Drive, or sorry, Lemuel Road, to permit 6,000 square feet of building contractor supply and two residential units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number 15, 2021 Z 082PR 001, a request to rezone from RS5 to R6A for property located on Jones Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 18 on page 8 of your agenda, 2020 S 066001, Darrow Downs Subdivision. It's a request for final plat approval to create three lots on property located on Antioch Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and find Lot 1 to be generally compatible, and find lots 2 and 3 provide for harmonious development. Item number 19, 2020 S 026001, subdivision of the Tony and Pamela Adams property. A request, and it's a request for final plat approval to create three lots on property located at 202003, 2203 Pennington Bend Road. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number 20, 2021 S 135001, Haywood Lane Cluster Lot Subdivision. It's a request for concept plan approval to create 28 lots for proper, on property located at Haywood Lane. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number 22, 2021 S 143001, Serenity Estates. It's a request for concept plan approval to permit 24 single-family lots for property located on Earhart Road. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. And item number 23, 2021 S, on page 9 of your agenda, 2021 S 148001, Elias Property Subdivision. It's a request for final plat approval to create one lot on property located on Charlotte Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, including variance to sections 4.2-5A, 1A through C. And under other business, item number 25, employee contractor renewal for Jared Isles. And item number 29, accept the director's report.
Thank you, Lisa. And before I, I feel like I just need to explain this process because it's, it's changed a little bit from pre-COVID to COVID now, still in COVID. So on the consent agenda, what we were doing once COVID, before COVID hit, was we would have the hearing, and we would put them on the consent agenda, and that was fine for that process. Well, when COVID hit, the calendars were, as, as you all remember, commissioners, when we were doing it by phone and by conference call, the calendars were really, really heavy. And so if somebody had requested to defer an item off of consent, or kick it off the consent agenda, then we would automatically defer that item. So now, going, meeting in person again, we continued that practice, and then there were some complaints from some of the public and folks in, in the development community that had raised concerns that that was not a fair process and could delay projects very costly. And so we looked at that again, and so this is the process. We were trying to limit crowd control for COVID reasons, but now that we're kind of back in the swing of things, even though we're wearing masks, this is the process that we have to go through. So I just wanted to give everybody heads up, including the public, just so there's a clear explanation. And of course, you can, you can always, if you oppose it, you, you can hear the item, and then we'll hear it that day instead of it being kicked to the next calendar. Is that a fair, anything else on that, Lisa or Director?
No, I think, I think that's, I think that's a good summary.
Okay, I just wanted everybody to be clear where we are from the public and, and the commissioners. So any, any questions before we get into the consent agenda? Okay, so here we are. Lisa, the items for consent that you have read, and no one is objected to at this meeting, are items and that are on the consent agenda, are items number 8, 10, 13, 15, 18, 19, 20, 22, 23, 25, and 29. Is that correct?
Yes, Chairman, that's correct.
All right, commissioners, you've heard those items. We'll need a motion to adopt the consent agenda. There's a motion. Is there a second? And a second by Commissioner Johnson. Vice Chair made the motion, and so any discussion? Oh, council, I'm sorry. I'm hearing things through the Plexiglas.
It happens every time.
And the mask. All right, so we have a proper motion second. Any discussion, commissioners? Seeing no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Eyes have it, and the consent agenda is adopted, which means for tonight, commissioners and the public, we are hearing the following items. Item number 7, and make sure this is correct too, Lisa. Items number 7, 11, 12, 16, 17, and 21. Is that correct? Hold on, let me make sure.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so six items tonight, so any of the other items have all been either put on the deferral list or have been passed. So I appreciate everybody coming down. And we do have more seats in the audience if you're in the back, and I appreciate everybody coming in. So the first item is item number 7. Ready for the?
Item number 27 is a request for subdivision for the Heartland North Project. This is a request for a concept plan approval to create 114 single-family lots and 28 two-family lots for a total of 170 residential dwelling units. The property is located on the south side of Brick Church Lane, west of I-24, north of Riley Parkway, and is approximately 65 acres. and is approximately sixty-five acres in size. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. To remind you on the history of this property, a one hundred and ninety-three lot concept plan was approved by the commission in two thousand and seventeen. The subdivision was subsequently challenged by neighbors. The appeals court remanded the plan back to the commission for consideration, and this is that consideration. Before you is the plan that was previously approved in two thousand and seventeen for one hundred and ninety-three lots. Earlier this year in May, the Planning Commission considered a revised plan that featured one hundred and eighty single-family lots. The commission deferred the item and the public hearing was left open. The commission expressed several concerns related to the plan. Those concerns generally included the overall amount of grading that was required by the plan, grading techniques that created steep slopes between lots, the placement of recreation area, areas, the transition from the rural policy on the opposite side of Brick Church Lane to this lot, to this property, and the lack of diversity of lot sizes. This is the plan that was presented at the May thirteenth Planning Commission meeting, which included one hundred and eighty lots. Since the May thirteenth meeting, there has been a revised plan that has been submitted to address the concerns expressed by the Planning Commission. Changes to the plan are generally as follows. The overall grading has been reduced. This has been reduced through a number of methods. The Western Entrance Road was shifted to the east to, to limit the amount of disturbance of, or to limit the grading on the property to the west there. In the internal area, roads and grading around internal areas with twenty percent in steeper slopes, natural and unnatural, has been adjusted to preserve these to the greatest extent possible. It reduced the difference in elevation in areas requiring grading, and the plan will utilize some split level homes, basement homes, as opposed to all slab on grade, which will allow homes to work with the topography of the site. Additionally, the plan increased the size of lots closer to Brick Church Lane and removed some of the lots away from Brick Church Lane to provide a better transition to the rural policy area on the north side of Brick Church Lane. It increased the diversity in lot sizes, added two-family lots, and added and rearranged open space and recreation areas. The zoning of the property, all of the area that's sort of in the darker shade of orange is zoned, is zoned R ten. To the north of that property is zoned RS twenty. And then to the south of this property, property is zoned IWD Industrial. The property has been zoned R ten since the early seventies. R ten would permit up to two hundred and forty-two lots with sixty-two family lots for a total of three hundred dwelling units. As a reminder on the Planning Commission's role in reviewing subdivisions, subdivision review is granted, subdivision review and authority is granted through Tennessee Code annotated. The Planning Commission is given the authority by TCA to adopt regulations governing the subdivision of land. This commission has adopted such subdivision regulations. The review of a subdivision is a technical review. The Planning Commission is required to approve or disapprove a plat within sixty days after initial consideration. The applicant with the last deferral did waive the sixty-day consideration, so that time would start today. When we talk about Nashville Next, which is the adopted general plan for Nashville, we talk a lot about community character manual. And the community character manual is the expression of the goals of Nashville Next at a parcel-by-parcel basis. So each community plan that makes up Nashville Next includes these detailed character policies for every property. And those policies link the vision, the county-wide vision of Nashville Next, to the zoning and subdivision regulations, which are the implementation tools of Nashville Next. The community character manual indicates that when the commission is considering a rezoning, that the proposed zoning district should be consistent with the land use policies. In subdivision regulations, the community character manual indicates that the land use policy is used for determining which set of rules apply to a particular property. A couple of examples of this would be subdivisions in neighborhood maintenance are required to meet infill requirements of the subdivision regulations if they're creating lots that front on existing streets. Subdivisions in a rural policy are required to meet the adopted rural subdivision requirements, which are located in chapter four of the subdivision regulations. The relationship between transects and subdivisions is more clear now than it has been in the past. Prior versions of the subdivision regulations contained a uniform set of standards across all areas of the county. They didn't consider the diverse character that exists across Davidson County. The commission adopted the current subdivision regulations that incorporate the general plan policies by including rules and standards for specific transects. This allows the subdivision regulations to reflect the unique character found in all of the transects across Davidson County. By reviewing against the subdivision regulations, you are reviewing against the general plan. The property, this subject site is T three suburban, is in the T three suburban transect. The policy is suburban neighborhood evolving. For sites within this policy, the conventional regulations found in chapter three are utilized. I wanted to talk just a bit about the history of policy in White's Creek as it relates to Nashville Next. So this is showing the entirety of the White's Creek planning area and the policies. And I know you can't quite see this. I'm going to zoom in on this particular property, which is noted as a red star in the lower right-hand corner of this, of the property. So here's a zoom in, showing you, and the colors don't show up quite super great, but the light yellow color is neighborhood evolving. The dark blue is district industrial. And then north of the site, on the northern side of Brick Church Lane, is T two rural maintenance. There are also areas of conservation. When Nashville Next was adopted in two thousand and fifteen, there were eleven areas of White's Creek that were pulled out from the overall adoption of Nashville Next for additional study. Those areas are indicated with a blue outline on this map. The property in question was not one of the eleven areas that was pulled out for additional study. It was adopted as T three neighborhood evolving with the adoption of Nashville Next, and it, and there was not additional study following that. So here is a clearer shot of the policy for the site and to show it in context with surrounding policies. So the policy on the site is primarily neighborhood evolving with areas of conservation. The conservation representing steep slopes and stormwater regulation buffers along a stream on the upper northwestern corner of the site. Property to the south is within a district industrial policy, and properties to the north are in T two rural maintenance. The subdivision process is a three-step process. We are on the first step, concept plan. The second step, final site plan, includes detailed construction drawings. And the third and final step is final plat, which would include any bonding of necessary infrastructure. The proposal before you is utilizing the cluster lot option of the zoning code, which is a by right option. It provides flexibility of design for the creation of common open space through the preservation of natural features. The maximum lot yield for this site under cluster lot is two hundred and forty-two lots. Lots may be reduced in size the equivalent of two zoning districts. For this case, that would be six thousand square feet. With the exception that two-family lots must meet the minimum lot size requirements for the zoning district, be a minimum of ten thousand square feet. Open space is required a minimum of fifteen percent per phase, and they're required to have one recreational facility. This is the latest version of the revised plan, which includes one hundred and fourteen single-family lots and twenty-eight two-family lots. Lots range in size from six thousand square feet to twenty thousand, to just to almost twenty-one thousand square feet. Phase one includes four point six acres of open space or twenty-two, twenty-six percent for that phase. Phase two includes twenty-five acres of open space. Recreational facilities are also included. The lots outlined in red are indicated as two-family lots. You will note that these are located on the southern part of the site, closer to the district industrial policy, further away from the rural policy. All of these lots are a minimum of ten thousand square feet. The yellow stars indicate the general location of recreation facilities and open space. The largest area is on the northwestern portion of the site and includes areas, large areas that would be left undisturbed. There are two access points from Brick Church Lane, and there are also two stub streets stubbing to the central property, the property located in the center and the property located to the west. Both of these stub streets are stubbing into properties that also have a T three neighborhood evolving policy. This subdivision must also comply with the hillside development standards of the zoning code. It requires that grading be minimized in areas with twenty percent or greater natural slopes. And it does encourage development to utilize the cluster lot options on sites with twenty percent greater slopes, which this application is doing. This slide indicates the slopes located on the site. Lots have been removed from areas with twenty percent or steeper slopes, consistent with the zoning code and subdivision regulations. And grading has also been minimized in these areas. I would note at the central, central portion of the site, there is an area of slope that was created through grading techniques when Riley Parkway was constructed. So those are not natural slopes. However, the slopes are, the man-made slopes are still being maintained to the extent possible and not disturbed. So changes to address the commission's concerns, you'll see this slide showing both the current plan and the previous plan. I'm going to walk through a few of the highlights for you on the changes that were made. Overall, the amount of grading has been reduced on the current plan, and grade changes in areas that require grading have also been reduced. You can see from the current plan on the top and the previous plan on the bottom, especially in the central portion of the site, you can see where there has been changes to the amount of grading. Additionally, the plan has included more variety in the lot sizes, and two-family lots have also been introduced to provide for diversity. In the previous plan, most lots were either in the under nine thousand or nine to ten thousand range, most being around six thousand. On the northern side, you can see now we have a range of lot sizes from six thousand, eight thousand, ten thousand, which include both single-family and duplex lots, and then some greater, closer as you move closer to Brick Church Lane. To improve the transition from the rural policy area, lots closer to Brick Church Lane were also removed at the western, western side. So you actually don't have any lots along the western entry road until you get significantly into the property. And on the eastern side, they have been increased in size. The lot closest to Brick Church Lane is double the size that's required by the zoning district. Twenty, so it's over twenty thousand square feet. In conclusion, staff recommends approval with condition as the proposal meets all of the subdivision and zoning code requirements. And it also meets the cluster lot and the hillside standards.
Thank you, Lisa. So we will go ahead and open this item for public hearing. And is the applicant? Come on up.
I'm Jim Murphy with Bradley, sixteen hundred Division Street, Nashville, three seven two zero three. Representing the applicant. With me is.
Let's start his time.
And I want to save two minutes for rebuttal.
Yes, sir.
And I'll wait till Lisa finishes passing them out.
Yes, yes.
That'd be the easiest way.
I wish you could have made these bigger.
We'll remember that next time.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jim Murphy, on behalf of the applicant, sixteen hundred Division Street, Nashville, three seven two zero three. Lisa has done a very complete job, really, of describing the changes that have been made to the plan since the May thirteenth public hearing. I recall one of the commission members at that meeting said that we should go back and take the commission's directions to heart and change the plan, and that's what we've done. We've reduced the number of lots. We've addressed the grading concerns. We've increased the diversity of lot sizes. One of the things that Lisa didn't point out, but over thirty-three percent of the lots are over ten thousand square feet, ten thousand square feet or larger. Twenty-three percent are between eight thousand and nine thousand, nine thousand nine hundred square feet, and forty-three percent are between six thousand square feet and seventy-nine hundred square feet. So there is a great diversity of lot size. There are not just a few large lots and a lot of small lots. There's lots in the middle, lots that are a large number of, ten thousand or larger. As Lisa pointed out, there's a few lots closer to the street that are actually well in excess of the minimum required for the cluster lot option, or required actually for R ten zoning. The smaller lots are located to the south. The larger lots are located closer to the RM policy to the north. Lisa mentioned the open space. Over forty-one percent of the site is in open space, and eighteen percent of the site is undisturbed. So the trees on that eighteen percent are going to remain. Also, since that meeting in May, Councilmember Gamble held a community meeting on July fifteenth to discuss and review the revised plan with the community. As Lisa pointed out, this application meets all the requirements of the subdivision regulations and the zoning code. Nevertheless, the neighbors continue to contend that it's not consistent with the community plan. They contend the density is not consistent with the community plan. But that's not a valid basis for disapproval. What they're really asking you to do is compare this property to the rural maintenance property to the north, which is asking you to compare property that is neighborhood evolving to rural maintenance. So that's inconsistent with the community plan to compare property in different transect, or different policy areas and say, you should base your decision on the property that's policyed as rural maintenance. This property is not policyed as rural maintenance. The community plan provides that land use decisions are made based on the policies shown in the community character manual. And here, that policy is T three neighborhood evolving. T three permits R ten zoning. T three evolving also permits the cluster lot option. In fact, it encourages the cluster lot option to preserve and address environmental concerns like that are present on this site, slopes and, and steep slopes and floodplain areas. So this plan is consistent with the policy for this area. It's obviously not consistent with the policy of another area, but that's irrelevant for the purposes of this discussion. The neighbors contend that it doesn't meet the cluster lot option because the lot size is six, that goes down to six thousand square feet, but that's expressly permitted by the zoning code. So this policy does meet the cluster lot option. As we've mentioned, it meets the transition provisions of the community plan by providing the smaller lots to the south and the larger lots to the north. It meets the open space. The cluster lot option provides that a minimum of fifteen percent of each phase has to be in open space. We meet that requirement. What the neighbors are saying is that we should meet some other undefined standard and have more open space, but that's something this commission cannot do. You are bound to meet, if we meet the provisions of the zoning ordinance on the open space, you can't deny it because you want us to have more open space. That's an undefined standard that you can't apply. The neighbors contend that the site distance, that the locations doesn't meet the requirements for Metro. But in fact, it does. We submitted the letter of a traffic engineer. Metro NDOT has actually approved the entrance locations for this, and the site plant, the site triangles for this location. So there's no basis for claiming that this, the entrances don't meet Metro's requirements. And finally, the neighbors contend that this property is going to cause flooding, even though the drainage calculations and stormwater improvement plans for this project have already been approved by Metro Stormwater for compliance with Metro's stormwater regulations. Now apparently, what the neighbors are contending is that Metro's stormwater regulations aren't stiff, aren't strict enough. But again, that's not a basis for this Planning Commission to turn down this application because you can't apply an undefined standard that's not. because you can't apply an undefined standard that's not contained in either the zoning code, the subdivision regulation, or Metro's stormwater regulations. So for those reasons, we contend that since this plan meets all of the applicable requirements, the zoning code, the subdivision regulations, the stormwater regulations, it should be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. And obviously, two minutes, we'll reserve two minutes for your rebuttal, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you.
So, and I meant to do this before Mr. Murphy went, but just a couple of housekeeping items while we're speaking. So number one is we have wipes for everyone's safety. We have wipes, we have hand sanitizer. So when you're finished, you can, you should wipe it down. Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you for reminding me.
And of course, if you want to wipe it before you speak too, that's fine, but I just want to make sure everyone knows that we have those there. Also, you know, we always maintain professional quorum in here. No screaming, no clapping, no, we give everybody their time. We, I'm always consistent on maintaining a professional meeting. You know, we, everybody gets an amount of time, it's in the rules, we've all agreed to it, and so we appreciate everybody to comply. So, and then finally, every speaker gets two minutes, and then of course, the council member gets to speak last, and I see the council member here, so appreciate that. So everybody gets two minutes, but please state your name and address so that we can get that on public record when you first start. All right, so anyone wishing to speak in support? Come on up. And there's a timer right here that everyone can see when you're speaking, okay? All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Tom White. Jim Murphy's swipe is good enough for me. I thought he did it very thoroughly, so I won't follow him. I represent the property owners in this case. My name is Tom White with Tune, Electric and White. Address is 511th Avenue North. My clients bought this property in 1960. Since 1970, it's been zoned to R10. Factors that should be considered. At some point, could have had north of 300 units on this property. With respect to the current issues that we've got, I don't think there's any debate other than the fact that the property is correctly zoned, meets the zoning code, meets the subdivision regulations, which have been articulated at some length. I think Lisa and the staff did a particularly good job. They've analyzed this on a number of occasions, and I think the plan's been better every time it's been submitted. But I think what's particularly important is that the opponents here are really saying, ignore the policy and apply a policy in a different area. That's not the province of the planning commission to do. There might be a sympathy factor there, but at the end of the day, it's the policy for the area that's so important. I do want to comment as well that my clients have worked particularly well with Jim Murphy's clients, and they've listened very carefully to the comments by this planning commission. And those comments have been articulated by Lisa today, by Jim Murphy, but issues such as the grading, the slopes, split level houses, the lots on Brick Church Lane being of a greater size, all of that was not only taken into consideration, it was incorporated. So the current proposed that 170 is a far cry from what would have been allowed at 300 into R10 as a straight issue. So I asked the commission to consider the comments, the articulation that's been given by this commission. My clients listened to that, and they incorporated it. And it's kind of hard to deny that they didn't incorporate almost every single suggestion that was made. It's decreased the number of lots, they're larger in certain areas, and most importantly, I think are consistent, not just what the legal requirements would mandate, but the comments of the planning commission, which are so important. So I respectfully urge your approval here. Thank you for consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing, well, it's going to take some time to do the wiping, so I apologize, but anyone else wishing to speak in support? Let's see. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Saying none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? And then, of course, let's try to maintain social distancing when you line up. Thank you. Welcome.
Let this drive in. Good evening, my name is Emily Snyder. I live at 720 Craighead Street. I am an attorney with Vastberry &amp; Sims, representing the Nashville Tree Conservation Corps, and I did request five minutes in advance.
Yeah, let's get her five minutes. We'll get you, there you go.
Thank you very much. The Tree Corps is particularly interested in this proposed development because it threatens a significant portion of the remaining tree canopy in Davidson County. But we have been asked by community stakeholders to discuss this evening the scope of this commission's review of this proposed subdivision, as well as the particular standards and guidelines that inform that review and provide a basis under the law to disapprove this proposal. A general outline of my comments is in the binder you have been provided at Section 1. First, I would like to describe the commission's role when considering approving or denying a proposed subdivision. The commission serves a quasi-judicial function, and in this role, it is the commission's task to exercise its independent judgment and consider all potentially legitimate objections. Such independent judgment must be exercised with respect to a proposal's compatibility and compliance with all applicable standards and guidelines, not just those acknowledged by the developer or the report for this proposal. As will be discussed further this evening by other community members, all standards and guidelines are not met by this proposal. There are three relevant standards or guidelines that are particularly important with respect to this subdivision. First, the planning commission must disapprove a development if it violates the general plan. Subsection 2 of subdivision regulation 3-1 provides that divisions of land, quote, "shall comply," end quote, with a variety of rules and regulations, including all parts of the adopted general plan, such as the community character manual and the community plan. Subsection 2 of subdivision regulation 7-1 provides that use of the word "shall" is always mandatory. Therefore, if the proposed subdivision does not comply with the general plan, it must be disapproved. In both the Hudson and Huntsinger cases which are cited in the binder, the approval of a proposed subdivision was reversed because the commission did not adequately consider whether those proposals complied with the general plan. If the planning commission approves this plan, those cases provide a basis to challenge that decision because this particular proposal does not fit the character of the area and is inconsistent with the general plan, a note that has been made on items 21 and 24 for the agenda this evening. Second, the planning commission must disapprove a development if it violates the zoning code, including the cluster lot option provisions, which will be discussed further by other community members this evening. Again, there is also authority for this in subsection 2 of subdivision regulation 3-1, which states that divisions of land shall comply with the zoning code. Finally, the planning commission should disapprove a development if it violates the health and safety provisions of the subdivision regulations. Language in those regulations establishes that the goal is to create conditions, quote, "favorable to health, safety, convenience, and prosperity," end quote, and the regulations are meant to be liberally construed towards these ends. The Highland Park Church case, which is also cited in your binder, shows that if the commission denies this proposal on the basis of health and safety concerns raised that are incompatible with the subdivision regulations, such a decision would be upheld in court. Your role is to independently evaluate the objections that you will hear from other community members this evening. Ample evidence will be presented that this proposed subdivision violates the general plan, violates the zoning code, and presents serious health and safety concerns in violation of the subdivision regulations. The commission must deny the subdivision proposal because it is noncompliant with the general plan. Additionally, because the proposal is noncompliant with the zoning code, the commission is required to deny this subdivision. Finally, because of the health and safety concerns raised, the commission should deny the proposal on the basis of its incompatibility with the subdivision regulations. These are three independent reasons for the commission to reject this proposal. Therefore, we request that the commission deny the proposal for the Heartland North subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you. And could you wipe the?
Yes.
Sorry, I feel like the COVID police. And that is not who I am. I appreciate everybody trying to cooperate.
You should just record it and have a button to press.
We all have to make it through together. So, thank you. Come on up.
Thank you, commissioners. Before I begin, I would just like to apologize. I did get into town about 2:00 AM this morning. There was also a community meeting about the repurposing, potential repurposing of Brick Church Lane School for our neighborhood, so in the issues of attrition, this is what we get. I did request five minutes as Secretary of Friends of Whites Creek as a neighbor group.
Yep.
I'll wait. Thank you.
Go ahead.
My name is George Nguyen. I live at 4601 Whites Creek Pike. The subregs, as previously stated, state that subdivisions shall comply with the adopted general plan. Commissioners should consider the community character as per the general plan, as well as consider the proposed changes. The Bordeaux Whites Creek Haynes Trinity Community Plan states, quote, "The community plans explain each community's role in National Next Vision and apply community character policies to every property in Davidson County to implement that vision through land use decisions such as zone changes and subdivision requests." Also, that's on page 5, continuing, quote, "All zoning, subdivision, and applicable development applications will be reviewed for consistency with the intent of this policy." That sentence is repeated three times in the Bordeaux Whites Creek Haynes Trinity Community Plan on pages 50, 54, and 56. Commissioners, in May, additional concerns expressed by these commissioners about this proposal included that the diversity of lot size was deemed important, that excessive stormwater retention areas were included in this plan, that the clustering was over the entire buildable area of this site, that the justification of clustering is occluded by other factors in play, the consideration of the surrounding properties and the neighbors' downzoning, that the proposal is failing the policy goals of serving the public, and that the proposal should be re-envisioned through a holistic perspective, holistic characterized by comprehension of the parts of something as intimately interconnected and explicable only by reference to the whole. It was also expressed that there were concerns about properly integrating the proposal generally into the environment. I would argue that these have not been addressed. Previous plan lot size of 180 lots was about 7,280 square feet per lot. The revised plan, 170 units, comes down to about 7,038 square feet per unit. Only two lots were meaningfully enlarged, lot number one, lot number two. Lot number one was enlarged to just over 20,000 square feet. Lot number two is a 15,000 square foot lot. And we see the addition of the 28 two-family or duplex lots towards the back of the property. I'd like to point out that one side of those is aligned against the interstate with very little protection, no barrier, and the rest of them at the rear of the property near what is the admittedly excessive detention pond, a high-voltage fence, and the special impact zone use of the FedEx industrial use. Under public safety in the subregs, there are safety issues and flooding, landslides, inadequacy of Brick Church Lane for the subdivision, as admitted by the staff report on a community plan amendment to try it in 2019. This proposal fails key goals of the cluster lot option, providing dubious, usable, or meaningful open space creation, and an overly intense exploitation of all buildable area. Reasons to disapprove under the adopted general plan is the adjacency to the special impact zone, failure to comply with the key goals, including lot size, and the special consideration of the rural transition in sensitive areas as called for in the plan, quote, page 24. Generally, Bradley Parkway marks the transition between rural and suburban policies. However, due to past zoning and development decisions, a few areas of suburban policy are located in the southern portion of Whites Creek. These areas should remain mindful of their larger surrounding rural context as development occurs and create transitions through building and site design as needed to complement the adjacent rural area. So we're not arguing that this doesn't comply with adjacent policy of rural. It does not comply with its own policy. It does not comply with the community policy for the area. Proposal disproportionately impacts the established rural character of the area, fails to preserve sensitive features, whether natural or manmade slopes, is strategically unsound by attempting to direct urban density to rural area. The overall cumulative density of the square foot per unit for this lot is more typical for T4 or R6-type zoning, not T3NE. Fails the required connectivity, the stub roads are stub roads to nowhere at this point. Brick Church Lane is a rural lane. And the implementation of National Next and subdivision requests. Further reinforcing the court-affirmed authority and obligation of the commissioners to disapprove a subdivision that is noncompliant with the general plan is provided in the content of the adopted general plan itself. Page 20, in the guide to National Next, National Next should guide development decisions, quote, "including regulations, rezonings, subdivisions, capital improvements." Further quote on page 12, use of the community plan says, quote, "Key decisions guided by the plan include planning commission's actions on subdivisions." Oh, gosh. It's not mindful of its rural context. It lacks the transitions that the commissioners asked. The concerns that the commissioners expressed to the applicant are not meaningfully addressed by the addition of 28 duplexes and enlargement of two lots up front. I appreciate them removing some lots towards the front of the property, but it's not enough, and I hope that you guys exercise your discretion and authority to disapprove.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll wipe it down.
Thank you.
And breathe.
The new system is just too short for my binder. Glad you have it, though. Elise Hudson, I'm at 4601 Whites Creek Pike, soon to be 536 Brick Church Lane. I'm representing District 3 Connect. Thank you for being here again. I think this is the sixth or seventh time that we've been at the planning commission just this year. I want to clarify a couple of things before I get started, and I'll walk you through the binder, which should have everything that you need. So first of all, we're not asking for special treatment. We're asking for you to uphold the existing laws that apply to this lot. So, you know, they say that a well-negotiated plan is one that makes everybody equally as frustrated, but I don't think that counts in this particular instance. They've done some cursory changes here, but they haven't addressed the main safety and security issues, and the items that were brought up by the attorney earlier are not the same items that we have in the binder, so I'll walk you through those. I'd also like to say that we're not exaggerating when we say that there are safety and security issues. There are systematic problems. It's not just one thing. It's not just the grading. It's not just the interstate. It's not just the safety fence. There's multiple things that are wrong in this particular property that are going to cost lives. And this family, being third-generation firefighters, are the ones that will have to also respond to that. So they are getting doubly hit with not only having to make sure that these rules are enforced to protect those people, but then they're going to be the same ones who are responding to the people who get hurt in traffic, or if there are issues with the soils, or if there are issues with that electric fence. So if you look at your binders, tab 2 has specific callouts for where these particular, this particular plan does not abide by the T3NE policy, like George said. The irony here is that T3, the max zoning for that, it recommended is R10. This goes down to R6 with the cluster lots. If you look at tab 3, the parts where we're saying where they're not compliant with the cluster lot option, have to do with the fact that building in a traditional manner creates no less open space than what's provided here. So it's against the intent of the cluster lot, and is a de facto rezoning. There's also recreational areas listed and located on steep slopes, so every single recreation area is right next to or on a very steep slope and is a danger to that community. If you look at tab 4, there's safety and subdivision issues where we talk about the problem soils. This is less than a mile from the I-24 landslide, right up against I-24. There's cliffs still in the back that backyards will just kind of dump off into you. There's an electric fence that runs the entire barrier of the southern perimeter right up against those stormwater retention fields. The site distances, we've shown that you literally cannot provide the right site distance there. There's no barrier between I-24, so we talked about that. And I'd like to point out, too, that improvement does not equal compliance. So they've done a few little things, yes, and they've added some additional recreation areas, and they've changed a couple of the little lots up on Brick Church Lane, but they haven't addressed the major safety issues that we keep bringing up that are under binder tab 4. I would also like to point out the lack of emergency access. The rear cul-de-sac that's there is not big enough for a good firetruck turnaround. And on tab 6, if, oh, sorry, tab 5 has some key points just to kind of close, and tab 6 has some conditions. The first page is a list of conditions that we've been asking for for months now that have not been addressed. And then the second page is actually conditions that were approved in 2017 that are not necessarily currently on this particular proposal. So we've already gone through and kind of talked about why and what your legal right and responsibility is to deny this based on not meeting the code, the subdivision regulations... and responsibility is to deny this based on not meeting the code, the subdivision regulations, and the policy. And I'd like to talk through, like I said, improvement doesn't mean that they are compliant, so it doesn't matter how much they've given or changed. It's whether the current version of that actually meets the law. Then there's, you know, systemic issues. So there's multiple issues on this property. It's not just the site distance. It's not just the grading. It's not just the flooding. Even the developer themselves on the community meetings have said this is a tough lot to build on. This is, I believe, the third builder that they've been through to try to come through this. The cost of our of their non-compliance is lives. It's not just lives, but it's money, it's time, it's attention. It's something the city needs more development of. So can't have both ways to be rural and T-three-N-E. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up.
Yeah, we gotta wipe it down.
That's okay. I'm with you all day.
Okay.
True. I'm getting some of George's germs walking.
I'm gonna try to get through this one without making the news.
All right. Good night.
Welcome.
My name my name is James Hudson. My wife and I live at five-thirty-six Brick Church Lane. I've lived here most of my seventy-three years. They ain't coming. I get up weather permitting and drink my coffee every morning on my patio and watch traffic on the hill on Brick Church Lane. I retired from the Nashville Fire Department with thirty years of service, and I responded to many wrecks and saw the causes of them. The hill they're putting the outlets of this development on is very dangerous on both ends. There's a dangerous curve on the west end, an outlet, and a very steep hill on the east outlet. People fly over this hill when they're late for work, and when they top top it, they're looking straight into the sun, which blinds them. Traffic does not take this into consideration, although I do not believe safe site distance is there anyway. There have been people killed on this hill and many injured, and if you allow them to put two hundred or more cars out onto this hill, people will be hurt and possibly killed. Hopefully, it won't be a school bus. Nashville Next said this White's Creek area should be treated with care. A hundred-and-seventy cluster lighthouses is certainly not doing that. This is a rural White's Creek area that averages sixteen acres per house. Please help us keep our White's Creek area safe and rural. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Who's next? Come on up. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Marcella Hudson, and I live at five-two-seven Brick Church Lane, and I would like to thank you for your service. I'd like to talk about undue hardship. This has been going on for over four years now, and I can't begin to express the amount of pain this has caused, not just to me and my family, but this neighborhood and community. So I believe I'm speaking here for them as well. Mental, emotional hardship. I'm so tired of fighting this, and I understand why fewer and fewer people show up every time this has been heard. Physical hardship due to the four years of accumulating stress, and financial hardship. As mentioned, we've had to take Metro to court simply to make them allow you to do the job that you're here to do. The neighbors are actively demonstrating our commitment to rural character by filing to downzone our properties with the support of Councilwoman Jennifer Gamble, and we'd like to thank her for her support. This includes thirty-seven partial owners in the immediate vicinity, representing over six hundred acres of countryside. This includes every single lot bordering this lot that they want to build on. We're tired, angry, but we're resolute, begging you to disapprove this plan. To be clear, disapproval does not stop them from building and does not deny them their right to develop their property. It sends them back to the drawing board to do better, something this commission has asked them to do at the last hearing. Four years without approval should be indication enough that this is not an acceptable, responsible plan for this rural neighborhood. Four years of undue hardship. And it's not just a Hudson family issue or a White's Creek issue. This is going all over Davidson County. This is excessive overdevelopment simply for profit at the expense of the community and the environment. Thank you.
Thank you. I think married couples are an exception for the White's.
No exceptions.
Well, my name's Wesley Hudson, five-two-seven Brick Church Lane. I was born and raised in the houses surrounded by this and now live directly across the street in an inherited farm. Of course, I'm in opposition. My family's raised cattle, hay, eggs, and soybeans at tines even on the neighbors' properties. I'm doing hay and in the process of putting cattle back in. Everybody that surrounds this area is what I call lifers, families with multiple generations living in multiple houses, some of them in the original farmhouse. Their plans are to stay and hand those houses down to the next generations. We've all put our properties in the green belt, and are pursuing RS eighty with council lady's support now, from where our zoning was changed years ago without our knowledge. We participated in Nashville Next, but somehow this little area kept getting pulled out of the rural that we were requesting. We don't know that how either. Of course, it's I-twenty-four and Bradley Parkway separates it from everything else except the industrial that snuck in on us, too. It's a converted dirt road with no shoulders, a large hill, the sharp curve. They check that for snow closures. The school system uses this to check for snow closures, and the places they've got coming out, which I know there's not much better available to them, are the two worst places on the whole two-mile-long street. Even though they've made revisions to the last numerous plans, and it looks nice on the cartoons they showed us, and now they're all of a sudden saying a hundred-and-fourteen lots, but it's still a hundred-and-seventy houses. It's still the same. They just somehow combined lots, I guess, by putting duplexes in. It's just too dense. It's it's too dense for this area. We need much less quantity and much more quality. As I understand, this builder is also one of the lesser-quality homes. They say they're quality, but we need something that will last like the neighborhood has lasted, like the community has lasted. Thank you for hearing us out.
Thank you. Anyone next? Oh, we did forget to wipe. Sorry, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you. Sorry, we gotta go through all that.
I understand. I'm sorry. We can't remember everything.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm Angela Williams. I live at seventy-two oh three Old Hickory Boulevard, White's Creek. I was one of the organizers of the White's Creek community in the Nashville Next process. We had over five hundred neighbors participate with ninety-eight percent consensus, Democrats and Republicans, that we wanted to maintain rural. I think our community has spoken very well. Since two thousand seventeen, we have been very united on this front and very involved. But if you look back on the history of White's Creek, we were the home of the poorhouse. We were known for immigrants and outlaws. We were we were a marginalized community. That's why we have I-twenty-four transecting our community, Bradley Parkway transecting our community. The zoning that they're talking about is Parkwood extended before I-twenty-four and Bradley went in and transected our community. So now we are a rural historic district, agricultural roots, and our agricultural roots are holding us together as a community of involved neighbors. Since two thousand seventeen, there have been five floods over the one-hundred-year mark. There have been multiple landslides, and we know we don't have the infrastructure for this. In fact, Polty Homes built Brookview, which is constantly flooding, which is down the hill from this, and they are in problems. Metro has spent millions of dollars buying out areas there, and now we're pouring more down on them. So we're left holding the bag. We're left holding the bag for floods. We're left holding the bag for the the dangerous lack of infrastructure and the added traffic and congestion on Bradley Parkway, like we always are. We're asking that you support our united community in helping us develop in a way that is that is consistent with who we are and what we are. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm a nurse. I should know this.
Thank you. All right, come on up.
I'm David Wells. I live at thirty-four sixty Knight Drive. The lawyers keep talking about how this development has been put in place, and these zoning laws have been put in place since nineteen seventies, since nineteen seventies. I sure do wish we'd address climate change and the flooding risk that this proposes for this neighborhood. Mounting evidence suggests that the overall breadth and severity of flooding risk have been understated. A year ago, Waverly, Tennessee, FEMA flood maps, which guide land and use regulations, only showed seven hundred and eighty-one homes at risk for a hundred-year flood event, but the First Street Foundation says at least three times as many properties were at risk. The maps are widely considered to be inadequate. Most notably, they don't account for the future sea level rise. Another negative side effect of bad development decisions touches in areas of repetitive loss. A repetitive loss property is a property for which two or more flood insurance claims of more than a thousand dollars have been paid by the National Flood Insurance Program, which is which is broke, by the way, within any ten-year period since nineteen seventy-eight. Let's travel downstream and south from this development to the closest repetitive loss area. Guess what? It's another Syntex housing development called Brookview, quoting from the most recent Metro multi-hazard mitigation plan. Flood damages within the Ewing Creek repetitive loss area are due to the construction in the natural floodplain. Flood damages have been aggravated by upstream and local urbanization and backwater from several bridges. Currently, the loss areas encompass a hundred-and-eighty-three properties with seventy-seven percent remaining unmitigated. Heartland North, or Heartless North, we should call it, is literally flooding every time downstream, including one of their own Syntex family homes. And this project was approved was approved by the Planning and Planning Commission only seventeen years ago. In conclusion, it's clear that the Polty Syntex Homes does not possess a corporate business model with the ability to build a safe, responsible development. This is a very important decision for Nashville. Please perform your judicial judicial role and disapprove this catastrophic event waiting to happen.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna wait until the handout is passed out entirely.
That's fine. Yep.
Thank you.
All right, I'm ready. My name is Jim Gregory, and my new address is forty-one fifteen Dry Fork Road, White's Creek, Tennessee. In the packet that was just handed out to you, please go to page seven. Here you will see Stormwater Infrastructure Map that we obtained through FOIA requests. You can glean from this map that the runoff from the sixty-five acres of land in this proposal will flow under Bradley Parkway and into downstream communities where thousands live and work. These communities, such as Brookview and Golden Valley, are already reporting flood damages happening. On page eight, you can see that there are over a hundred households along Ewing Creek that are within the hundred-year floodplain, and multiple properties here are also in Metro's flood buyback program. These are communities of color and are of low income with properties existing in a floodplain. Per Metro Code, the proposal before you all you all today is only required to build stormwater detention ponds to hold eighty-five to ninety-five percent of a hundred-year flood event. Hundred-year flood events are occurring more frequently than every hundred years due to our ever-changing planet. In the future, with climate change, it's going to rain harder in the southeast, and today we need to build smarter communities than we are today. In middle Tennessee, just a few weeks ago, we experienced a thousand-year flood event in Waverly, Tennessee. And about ten years ago, also in middle Tennessee, here in Nashville, another thousand-year flood event hit our city. Forty-three people died in those events. Ten years ago, not a thousand years ago, two thousand-year flood events occurred in the same region. Let's talk about trees on this property. On page eleven, you'll see an estimate of how much additional stormwater will be released into existing stormwater infrastructure. I have a five-gallon bucket here for perspective. When just thirty seconds thirty acres of forested land are removed and replaced with impervious surfaces, every year, an additional seven million five-gallon buckets of water will flow through the Brookview and Golden Valley in a small stormwater ditch that you can see in the handout on multiple pages. So it's clear to see that this high-density proposal will only make worse already-existing flood problems, or perhaps even much worse, when the next one hundred, two hundred, five hundred, or thousand-year flood event happens again. That's why I would encourage you, please disapprove this project and let the community guide a more fitting, safer development for this parcel of land. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Anyone else? And please wipe. Thank you. Former Planning Commissioner.
First and foremost, thanks for not putting us at the end of the agenda or deferring this yet again. Hi, I'm Jennifer Hagendear. I live at six-eighty-one Brick Church Lane in White's Creek. I, on September twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen, I was sitting in that chair, and this was on the consent agenda. And I looked up and said, I have no idea what this is, and it's right up the street from my house. In fact, I was like, I have a two-year-old at home, and I'm leaving her to do this job. So thank you for that. But I have no idea what this is. And oh, my God, how many houses are they gonna put on that hill? And oh, my God, where do the Hudson's live? They live right there in the middle of that. And then my husband said, oh, we fought that. We said T-two, but every time it came back, T-three. I'm gonna disregard that. That doesn't matter. Legally, you are required by law. You were sitting in this in my judicial capacity. You've heard all these things, but don't let the lawyer scare you, because I am one of them, and I'm not scary. This is something you should decide based on the regs, and this, I sat in that chair, and we disapproved subdivisions because you couldn't turn a fire truck around. You can't turn a fire truck around in this property. When you drive down that two-lane that lane road, when my child is sixteen years old and driving down this road, and there are two hundred cars coming out, and there's ice on that hill, and there's blind sun coming off that ice, and he's killed, I'll call you. This is a legal situation, but this is a personal situation for those of us. And guess what? The community does keep coming back, and it's not for any other reason other than this is a disaster waiting to happen, and the policy shouldn't be T-three neighborhood evolving, but even then it doesn't comply, and you know this. Floods are not going away. We do not have to kowtow to developers. They want to build. There's plenty of space to build in urban centers. There's plenty of space to build up Brick Church Pike. This is a two-lane rural road, and you know better. Let's end this now. No more deferrals. Good night.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up. It is long-wa.
Hi, my name's Colson Horton. Please forgive my lack of formality. I didn't know I was gonna be coming tonight. I live at five-three four-two Green Valley Court. I'm not in this area. I live in Oak Hill, and I just want to say we've seen Nashville grow so much. There's so few properties in parts of our city. There's so few properties in parts of our city that are beautiful. From just an urban conservation perspective, standing with this community just means so much to be able to preserve what's left of Nashville, and I just wanted to state the importance of that from somebody who is not a part of this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for wiping down. Anybody else on this item? We'll see. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right. Rebuttal, 10 minutes, Mr. Murphy.
So first, there was a question or a request that the conditions that were imposed in 2017 be imposed. Well, the reason they're not imposed is since 2017, the actual design of the road improvements, the site distance, all those issues have been addressed by NDOT, and so those are included in their conditions of approval. All the, you know, we've committed to add turn lanes, we've committed to pay $80,000 to Metro for road improvements in this area. All those things have been done since 2017 to address the conjures that were raised in those conditions. So a couple of things I'll get to. The argument about excessive flooding is interesting. On one point, we hear the neighbors complaining about the excessive size of the detention pond, and in the other, we hear they're complaining about this project was going to cause flooding. Well, the excessive detention pond is going to actually reduce the peak flow from the current site as a result of the sizing of those ponds. So this property is not going to cause the conditions to be worse than they are today. They're actually going to cause it to be better. The discussion about this property, this project not meeting the T3 NE policy because of the 6,000-square-foot lots ignores the fact that the zoning ordinance provides as a matter of right that in an R10 district, if you use the cluster lot option, you can reduce the lot size to 6,000 square feet. So it is consistent with the cluster lot option, and the cluster lot option, as Lisa mentioned, is a matter of right. So there is no incompatibility or noncompliance with the plan because of the size of lots. For all the reasons we've discussed before, we would request you approve this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Counsel lady, come on up. Welcome. Thanks for coming.
Thank you all. I also appreciate not being at the end of the agenda tonight, so thank you for that. Thank you for your service. Thank you to the planning staff for all of your due diligence and work on improving this project. Thank you to the community for the community engagement. I really appreciate the community engagement, because a lot of the ideas that came out of our community meetings are included in the revisions of this plan. We held at least three community meetings about this since earlier this year in February. In addition, many phone calls, emails, newsletter correspondence, so we've had a very meaningful community engagement about this project. This plan that you see is at least the third revision since we started meeting about this project earlier this year. And since then, as you heard, well, I'll go back and say, during those meetings, a lot of the concerns that were raised had to do with density of the project, traffic, and the disturbance to the natural slopes. And since then, as has been stated, that these issues have been addressed by reducing the number of lots from 193 to 170, adding basements and crawl spaces to the homes to decrease disturbance to the natural slopes, adding more trees, green space, walking trails, and a historical marker to pay tribute to the area's Native American history, adding a left and right turn lane on Brick Church Lane and on Brick Church Pike, a left turn lane on Brick Church Pike, to address traffic and safety concerns, in addition to agreeing to donate $80,000 for Metro to conduct a regional traffic study to deal with traffic issues in the entire area. So while this plan may not be exactly what some residents want, it is a significant improvement. And I'm also working with neighbors that live on Brick Church Lane and Knight Drive, some of who you've heard from tonight, to change the zoning of their property to RS80 in order to create more balance in the character of this area, because this area is really a transition area between suburban and rural. And we all in the community value and appreciate that. I live about a mile from this property. I live in a subdivision with 180 houses. I've lived there for 25 years. So I understand some of the concerns that they have. I feel like those concerns have been addressed. In fact, I had the same concerns with the first plan that we saw. I feel like those concerns have been addressed, and moreover, I feel like this property will provide the much-needed single-family homes for middle-income families to invest in and enjoy the quality of life that District 3 provides. And I have to say on the record, I disagree with the characterization of Brookview. Brookview is a similar community that's on the other side of Riley Parkway, and it is a middle-class community, very diverse community. I walked and knocked on every door, met a lot of people in that area. It's a diverse community, but it does not have trees. It does not have nearly as many trees. In fact, I'm working with Root Nashville and the Nashville Tree Foundation to plant trees over there to deal with some of the issues, and that subdivision was built before some of the stricter subdivision regulations. My subdivision was built before some of the stricter regulations that we have now. So for these reasons, I support this project. I appreciate the community for coming out. I intend to continue to work with them. I think it's about 500 acres that we will be downzoning on this street and in this area to make more balance characterization of the suburban and the rural area. So with that, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to leave. I have to go to another community meeting at 6 o'clock, but I do appreciate your consideration and ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lady. Really appreciate you coming. Seeing nobody else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. Vice Chair, it's good to see you. Would you like to go first?
I will.
It's a tradition. I always call when you're very first meeting.
I was scared. I wanted you to look at Jeff.
I'm going to get him next. I'll get Jeff.
Oh, this is a really hard one. I guess I have, I guess, just for my own, like, re-education or confirmation, can we talk about the community policy, community plan policy? So, and I think logically it makes sense, but when you allow the cluster lot option, and it does leave an inconsistent lot size that's not consistent with the community plan, is that an issue? I mean, I guess, to the point being that R6 is not consistent with the T3, I'm sorry, the T3 neighborhood evolving.
So when we're talking about zoning in the land use policies, we're taking into consideration any adopted regulations and ordinances that we have, and so if the neighborhood evolving policy is indicating that T3, or I'm sorry, that R10 is appropriate, this property is zoned R10. They are utilizing an existing by right tool that's in the zoning code to allow clustering of lots. They're not getting R6 density. It's an R10 density, which is what really the policy is speaking to. So in other words, yes, they are clustering lots down, but they're not getting an R6 density.
Okay. Okay. There was a couple of other things in the binder that caught my eye, and I just, we hadn't talked about before, and one was the special impact area around FedEx. Is that something that, I mean, it seems to, at least what's in the binder, seems to indicate that we intended to have some special consideration around the FedEx site?
Sure. So special impact areas are actually very diverse, if you look around the county. It was somewhat of a catch-all for unique situations. We actually have special impact areas that are office uses that are next to residential, and so it doesn't necessarily mean that it is a noxious use or a high-impact use. It just means that there might be something sort of unique that you should look at, but there's buffering that's sort of required, that would be transitioning this from that, transitioning this subdivision to that special impact area. So it doesn't mean that properties around it shouldn't develop, or that it's a noxious use. It just means that you might have an industrial zoning, which we have in this case, IWD, next to a residential zoning. However, IWD is a relatively low-impact industrial zoning, where you would not see some of the higher-intensity industrial uses. So I sort of, I started digging around and looking at the special impact areas as they existed across the county, and there's not a lot of commonality among them, except for maybe some uses that are near residential.
Okay. Okay. And then I guess my last question for staff relates to Brick Church Lane, and, you know, it is interesting to see the statement from our own staff report talking about the fact that Brick Church Lane is not, well, it's in the major, you know, it's classified the major collector and street plan, it's not really functioning the way it's intended to. So I know we've talked about an $80,000 contribution from the developer, but that's for a regional traffic study. It doesn't seem like that's directly tied to some of the specific issues with Brick Church Lane, and I guess what's our take on the concerns that have been raised by the community on that?
So we do have someone from NDOT here as well, but I would note that there was a traffic study that was prepared and completed, and there are certain required improvements that would be made to Brick Church Lane, on the side of the subdivision. But we do have John here, John Bagosian here, if you want him to speak more to what improvements are required.
Yeah, that would be great.
Hello, John Bagosian, NDOT. So your question?
I am curious to know what kind of improvements are needed for this development, and then how do we reconcile this with the concern in our own staff report about the condition of Brick Church Lane?
By the condition of Brick Church Lane, did you mainly mean site distance?
Well, the highlighted blurb, I have to go back and find it, that basically said that it was a substandard, in substandard condition. Maybe start with the improvements required, and I'll find the blurb in the binder.
Sure. So they conducted a traffic study in 2017 with the original site plan that was more intense. Our traffic studies are usually good for a five-year period, so the traffic study remained. The traffic in the area had not significantly increased in that timeframe, so those traffic conditions did remain in effect. Those conditions required a partial contribution for future-needed traffic signals at Brick Church Pike at the Riley on-off ramps. TDOT is currently in process to design and install traffic signals at those intersections, but the development was still willing to provide that financial contribution to do a regional traffic assessment for the community, so that we can better plan and assess transportation needs in the area. So that is a contribution that they are providing to mitigate. They are installing a left-turn lane, and I believe a right-turn lane at the intersection of Brick Church Pike at Brick Church Lane, and they did assess the site distance at their driveways, and they confirmed that it meets our standards.
So the thing that's highlighted in the binder, that Brick Church Lane is a suburban two-lane collector avenue, but it's not constructed to the standards, road shoulders are limited and lack sidewalks and bikeway, that's not the concern, but today, Brick Church Lane looks like and functions as a rural corridor.
So they are constructing their required MCSP cross-section along their frontage. So they are upgrading Brick Church Lane to the acceptable standard along their frontage, and I believe that will address this comment.
Okay. Can we do that just for one stretch of roadway and not do the whole roadway? I mean, it's not a very long stretch from Brick Church Lane, right? I mean, from Brick Church Pike.
I'm not familiar with the entirety of this. I'll have to look at an aerial and really assess.
It's pretty standard for something like a subdivision, where you have frontage along a street like this, for them to improve to the MCSP standard along their frontage.
Just because it's not necessarily per the MCSP standard for the entire, you know, section of the roadway does not mean it's an inadequate road in the sense of serving the traffic that's currently on that road. It might not necessarily be at the future build-out of this roadway, but this area is not necessarily at its future build-out as well, so that's not necessarily the truest concern for the area.
I'm going to let my other commissioners ask some questions. I definitely have a lot of ongoing concerns about the health and safety with this development. I think the neighbors brought up a lot of compelling concerns, both with, I mean, I think the Brick Church Lane thing seems like a potential issue, and then the stormwater runoff, but I understand that that would be handled in subsequent phases, but I'm going to let other people ask some questions and keep thinking.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Maybe don't leave yet. So regarding the fire truck turnaround, that is always a bit concerning, especially with this grade, you know, the fire truck getting up and down anyway, did you review that?
So NDOT does have roadway standards, and those standards are for grade and cross-sections, those sorts of things, for our solid waste, for our maintenance vehicles, for EMS, those sorts of things. The subdivision was reviewed by the fire marshals, and I believe they did approve it, and our review did confirm that it does meet those standards.
And does that mean that the fire trucks would, they would just go around the block, I guess, or something? Or did you even look at it to that extent? Was that more the fire marshal?
Fire marshal will assess the emergency access for those vehicles.
And one more thing, just as the vice commissioner said, the vice chairman, I'm sorry, not commissioner. So you are not requiring this brick church to be, this part to be upgraded with this plan? This is a more regional study that you're looking at? Is that what I understood? And forgive me, just if I misunderstood that part.
Correct. The contribution is going to go towards a regional transportation study for the area to assess defects and those sorts of things, not necessarily, this development and this contribution is not necessarily going to construct and improve. It's going to identify capacity needs, delays, those sorts of things, so we can address that when future development comes online. We know what the true needs are for the area, and we can either fund those ourselves or work with future developments to make those improvements.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So thanks, Lisa, for explaining the cluster lot, because I was concerned about that as well. It does attract things too. So I guess, can you just one more time describe? I think I got it about the conformance to the general plan, which, you know, I know that part is. Can you just describe that one more time? And a little bit for everything Lisa, like for me, but also just, you know, in general, just because that was one of the, you know, things that was brought up.
Sure. So I have up on the screen some language that comes directly from the community character manual, which is the general plan, part of the general plan. And this is directing the planning- And this is directing the planning commission on how the different regulations, how the community plan is used in considering the different types of applications that we consider. And it says that when someone files a zone change application, you all are looking to make sure that the recommendation is that you look at the policy to make a determination about whether or not to support the zone change or not. For subdivision regulations, the policy, the CCM, is used to determine which set of rules apply to subdividing that particular property. So in other words, if something is neighborhood maintenance along an existing street, it's going to point you to the infill regulations that are part of the subdivisions. So it's telling you, this is neighborhood maintenance. It's on an existing street, so you need to be compatible. And here are the rules to ensure that it is compatible, the infill standards. It's going to say if you're in T2 rural, we've got a whole set of subdivision regulations that are going to make sure that if you have a subdivision, you need to meet these rural regulations because that's how you comply with the general plan, by meeting those rural regulations. So the community plan, as it relates to subdivisions, is saying, here's where you look, okay? And by looking in these places and applying these regulations, then you're going to be consistent with the general plan. So for T3 suburban, which this is in, and this table is from the subdivision regulations. And you'll see it's going to tell us in T2 rural, you're going to use the rural character subdivision, rural character subdivision regulations because it requires preservation. It's making sure that you're keeping the rural character, therefore meeting the policy. In T3 suburban, you're utilizing the conventional suburban subdivision regulations. There can be opportunities for applying what's called a walkable subdivision. But typically, you're just applying the general standards of the subdivision regulations. Because a T3 suburban transect is expecting suburban-style development. T3 Neighborhood Evolving specifically says that you may have more intensity than traditional subdivisions, that you may have smaller lot sizes than traditional suburban development because of its character as evolving. And so by applying the conventional regulations, you're meeting the general plan.
That was great, thank you, Lisa. Yeah, I'm a little bit like Jessica. I feel like, it feels like it's still a lot of mass there. I think I made the comment about making the lots a little bigger last time. And apparently, the applicant did do that. And, but it does seem, it does seem like they are, you know, they have worked to try to make this more compatible. I guess that the density, this much does still bother me. But it does seem like they're checking through all the things that I would use as a tool. And I do feel like that the Brick Church Pike shouldn't just be part of a regional plan. I think it should be improved with this because, you know, we're making, you know, such a big impact. And it seems like this should happen now. So it almost seems like the developer should be part of this immediately so that if this were going to happen, it wouldn't be like something that could be later just based off of, you know, just, this is such a major impact to this, you know, this community. So I don't know if that is something we have any, you know, authority that can change that, not something that could be later on. I guess those are the main things which were, I'm still would be interested to listen. But that's my struggle.
Counselor?
Thank you. I actually have a ton of questions that I will try to consolidate as we go along. And hopefully, we can answer them together. I'm concerned that when we are talking about the policy and the flexibility of cluster lot subdivisions, that it's for mixed housing types. And I, while I, you know, they have, the developer has put in some HPR duplexes, whatever you, the word of the day for them now. My concern is that they're still grouped together rather than like scattered out throughout the plan. I think that is what, when I think of diversity of housing types in a subdivision, it would have made more sense to scatter them out throughout instead of having clumps and lumps of housing types. Am I not seeing the whole plan on the pictures that are shown? Or, Lisa, sorry about this. Or is the sidewalk really just kind of terminating on the driveway? Does the sidewalk go on Brick Church Pike all the way to the ends of their property lines?
There are not sidewalks along Brick Church. They are not required. The subdivision regulations require sidewalks to be installed along the new streets. And so they are, they are building the sidewalks along the existing streets. But sidewalks are not required along Brick Church Lane, part of the subdivision regulations.
I guess it's in their picture that they're putting, they're going to do probably like five feet of sidewalk. And I think that's just very misleading and should be continued on Brick Church Pike. But I also, it sounds like there might not even be enough room with the right-of-way and constraints of the road to even do sidewalks along their entire property. Although I think that they should highly consider that. Do we know, typically in a TVA easement, has TVA said that they are all right with people traversing around in that easement and having a walking path and things like that?
Typically, as long as you're not having structures, then you can have like a path or sidewalks or those sorts of things, even in some cases driveways and roads, as long as you're not having structures above them.
The recreational areas very much concern me, especially the ones on the southern part. I'm trying to remember, the ones that would be under where it says Phase 2. And then we have the little green area. That still seems awfully steep to be having recreational areas. Same with the one in between where it says Phase 1 and Phase 2. That still seems very steep to qualify as some sort of picnic or recreational area. I guess we are just going to be going ahead and training our children to hike mountains out here. So that's kind of concerning to me. I'm concerned about the slopes that still cross over and lot. And I might have new contacts in, but I still am not sure I got these numbers right. But it's like 99, 98, 90, 89, 88, and 82. I'm concerned that those are crossing over the conservation areas. One of them you'd have to drive through a steep slope. The driveway to get there, it appears from comparing these maps. So I've got some concerns there. I have concerns about the buffers, that there's not enough buffer between the interstate. What this is going to lead to is the councilwoman from the area is going to get a lot of complaints about noise from future residents. I think that the electrical fence is a very attractive nuisance. It's going to cause somebody some problems, especially the little children who can't climb the steep slopes to play in the playground. I guess I would, I'm also concerned about the floodwater and the stormwater being all in one place. And how does that, I wish we could see more of a study about that and how that's going to impact FedEx. Because the last thing we want is one of our giant shipping centers to have water damage that is, that could be an issue in the future. And then looking at the conditions that the neighbors are requesting, if this would be approved, there are several of them that I agree with. And so I guess if we get to that point, I would like to bring them up then. But I do want to bring up one that was not on here about the lots that are, where we're concerned about the fire truck turnaround. It might just be in the best interest of everyone to cut those for now. Let this get built out before, they can always come back and re-subdivide those out. But I'm just not sold on those yet. And then also, similar to my fellow commissioners, 80K for a regional study is, sounds nice. But at the end of the day, it's not actually doing any improvements on what they are causing by this building. So I will listen to everyone else. And if we get to a motion time, I will probably have some conditions that I may want to add at that point.
Commissioner Jones?
Thank you. Because this was, you know, we had in May. And then come up in July, but deferred. So I did have lots of time going back old record and reading lots of subjects and reading a community plan and so forth. So I would like to take a little time and address each of my concern. So Mr. Dickerson, do you have at your disposal of subdivision regulation 312 conformance of applicable rules and regulations? And there's list A, B, C, D, E, F?
Yes.
Would you mind reading up those condition A, B, C, D, E, F?
Yes. So the preface of it says that it shall comply with all applicable laws, ordinances, resolutions, rules, policies, or regulations, including but not limited to the following. A, all applicable provisions of Tennessee law, regulations, or policy. B, the zoning code, building and housing codes, and all other applicable metro laws. C, the adopted general plan, including its constituent elements and the major street plan. D, the rules of the Metropolitan Health Department and the Tennessee Department of Health and Environment. Do you want to read the other two?
No.
There's also an E now.
Thank you so much. So I am thinking about if this subdivision plan comply with all the list, Mr. Dickerson, read up. So I think originally, let's say, A, there was concern it must be cemetery in the lot. But I understand further study from the Tennessee Historical Commission, they determined, or as of right now concluded, there's no cemetery. So I think we are okay for that. If by any chance this thing moved forward and if we, you know, somebody find artifact or human remains, they have to follow state regulations. So I think we can skip that. Two, the zoning code, building and housing code, and all other applicable metro load. So I'm thinking about this cluster lot option. Because this is a cluster lot option. I know Ms. Milligan said it's meet with 10, you know, we are not 10 zoning, 10, you know, density. But I've been doing some calculation. So I think this calculation comes up to 1,196,534 square feet. So if this was to 10 zoning density, it would be 119 lots. And so assuming 25% of the 119 lots are duplex eligible. So that will yield to 90 single-family and 29 two-family and then, you know, 148 units with 10 zoning. So I'm not advocating, you know, 148 units. But, you know, actual cluster lot option, you know, language. Mr. Dickerson, do you have that in your disposal? So I will read. So it says, Metro Code 17.12.090, Cluster Lot Option A. The preliminary plot subdivision shall establish that clustering is proposed and display the layout and area of all lots and common area and all phasing boundary. And within preliminary plan of subdivision, large contiguous area may be proposed for development of single-family lot that are contain less land than normally required by table and continuing. So I'm sure, you know, this one has, yes, large contiguous single-family lot, but include two-family lot. So probably it's just a matter of interpretation and how read. But it seems to me, it, you know, this plan is kind of cherry-picking. You know, just picking a smaller size based on two-zone downsides, R6, but mix up actual duplex lot. I understand, you know, in May, Commissioner Haines asked for diversity of the land. But, you know, I'm not sure if, you know, that's what Mr. Haines, what in mind. Of course, you know, Commissioner Haines can speak, you know, as he feels. So that's my concern. Seems like, you know, this is not really following precise language of cluster lot option by mixing up single-family lots with two-family lots. So that's my concern number one. And also looking at the lots, you know, number 1, 2, 3, 4, the entryway, eastern side is eastern or southern side of the entryway. It is indeed enlarged, but it include unbuiltable area. So it seems to me it's like artificially enlarged. So it's not really enlarged. So I take it rather, you know, displeasure, in my opinion. So next one is number C. The adopted general plan, including its constituent elements and the major street plan. So, you know, applicant said we should not compare T2 rural maintenance versus T2 neighborhood evolving. But, you know, in the recent subdivision, you know, regulation, we are more encouraged to see more larger area to see if it's comply with, you know, general plan. So in other words, I think we need to, when we have those plan, we have to have a better transition. So across the street is T2, you know, rural maintenance. And then immediately across the street with two-lane street, it's just, you know, drastic change. So I don't think our intent was to have that kind of drastic change, you know, across the street of each other, but rather put some transitional lower density to higher density. So I do not see this plan, you know, accomplish that our intent as far as general plan is concerned. And when it comes to, you know, the particularly, you know, Bordeaux White Creek Community Plan. So it says in the community plan, the actual language states, approximately 50% of the community, mainly in White Creek, had steeply sloping terrain, 20% slope or greater or rise of 20 feet or more for every 100 feet of horizontal distance. Many of area with steep slopes are also comprised of unstable soils that are stabilized by tree cover. So, you know, this plan proposes 41% of open space, including, you know, undeveloped area. So that means 59% of the parcel will be disturbed. All the large area contiguous tree coverage will be removed and then replaced by, you know, concrete internal driveway, you know, water and sewer line. So this is actually conflicting, you know, a Bordeaux White Creek community that realizes importance of tree, especially when this hill and unstable soil. So that would be my concern. And also, you know, this area has been T3 Neighborhood Evolving policy to added density. So it was, you know, one of the staff reports stated, it was directly adjacent to IWD. So I personally do not agree with, just because it's adjacent to IWE, it will appropriate to put T3 NE. Because it is adjacent, but it does not share any street. So it's like, you know, just back-to-back. So if it's sharing like developed, really, you know, true T3 NE street, I do agree with that assessment. But just because it abut in the backside of the property does not mean it's appropriate to have T3 Neighborhood Evolving. And thinking about constituent element, I mean, in the beginning with when we first started updating Nashville Next, this community has been consistent. They always wanted to have this to be at minimum neighborhood maintenance. They always wanted to have this to be at minimum neighborhood maintenance, or, you know, possibly T2, you know, rural maintenance. But again, and again, and again, this particular property was denied for to change the, you know, appropriate neighborhood policy. So, so that's another concern. So speaking of the major and the collector's street plan, I know, you know, it was brought up and Commissioner Tiff and Commissioner Farr asked about the major and the street, you know, collector's plan. Our staff reports, you know, state Brick Church Lane is not constructed in its MCSP standard. I mean, it is designated to T3 NE, but reality is just rural two-lane road. And I personally drove it and where the entryway, the, I think, I want to say it's a northern part, is a proposed, it's really steep. So as soon as come under the I-24 and then it's like uphill, and then when it comes curb, it literally cannot see the distance. So, you know, few meetings ago, we disapproved, not similar, but similar condition of subdivision. It was proposed seven house on the rural, you know, road. And just because the entryway driveway was proposed by the car, we were so concerned about the safety, you know, coming out of the seven houses, added seven house, but also some people driving that rural road. So it's a really safety hazard. So I am very concerned about that. So those, that, and then, let's see. So next one. I have lots of things, so. That's, I know. Standards and regulation adapted by, so that's F, the standards and regulations adapted by all other boards, commissions, and agency of the county where applicable. So there is a committee called Sustainability Advisory Committee. Their Sustainability Advisory Committee will advise and support city's commitment pursuant to global covenant of mayor's development climate action plan for the city of Nashville. So the following, the detailed list of mayor's group has initial climate change and environment initiatives, like solar power, energy savings program, lead certificate, and establishment of Sustainability Advisory Board. And then saving and strengthening Nashville's tree canopy is one of the initiative. So in this subdivision, particularly considering the location, it does not meet those requirement. So for those reasons, based on subdivision three one two conformance to applicable rules and regulations, I do not think this plan meets that requirement, but I'm interested here, other commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sims?
I'm so grateful for such smart colleagues. And they really get the technical aspects of this, but I want to come back for just a minute to talk about how you really don't want to be up here. This, this is a really hard job because our city has grown and grown and grown. And we are in a really hard place where we're kind of, if we don't build, what do we do? Cities can't sit still or they die, and that's just hard research. Or we end up having to build in places that nobody wants it. And if I hear T4 wants more, I'm going to scream because T4 is where I live and we can't get any more dense. So where does our people go? Where do they go? And I think the, I really, and I'm really excited for us in terms of getting in front of this because we've had a lot of neighborhoods have concerns about cluster lots. And cluster lots, we're addressing that right now as a team, as your commission, we are actually studying cluster lots right now, and that's posted for public hearing right now on the website for Metro Government, to see if we can better address some of the concerns that we keep hearing from neighborhoods. The problem we've got is we have buildable land in this county, sitting adjacent to and impacting a lot of land that we don't want to ruin, that we want to make sure is conserve somehow. So you've got to figure out how do we compromise here? How do we actually do something with the land that is buildable? And even if it doesn't appear to look like it's compatible, I, I think it is. We are trying desperately as a city to add more housing, more affordable housing, and at the same time meet all the other things that we have to do, which is make sure we have our tree canopy, make sure we do sustainable growth. And so I really think that the neighborhoods who are really wanting to conserve their way of life, so does everybody else in Nashville. I don't want to live in a high-rise district, and yet that's what coming if we can't figure out how else to compromise as a city. The other thing I think is really important for us to keep in mind is that the cluster lots is a really old, really old, it's probably 20 years old in our country, public policy that really addresses the very thing we're trying to address here, is how do we hang on to the beautiful parks of Davidson County? How do we hang on to the trees and at the same time give us more buildable room? And so I'm often the one up here just banging my fist trying to protect neighborhoods, but the way we protect neighborhoods, all of them, not just each one, is by giving us more buildable land. I don't think this plan, for all the reasons my colleagues said, is the best plan. I think that on page 24 and 25 of the book that the neighborhood gave us, they actually gave us some really good ideas about what can be done to change it, to make it even better. But at the same time, I think I would be really remiss if I didn't say somewhere we're going to all have to give and get density that none of us want. And so I encourage us to do that. At the same time, I want to thank this neighborhood. You have taught me the meaning of tenacity and perseverance, and I wish all of our neighborhoods felt as passionately as you guys do. So for me, I really want this plan to get better, but I am so not into throwing out the baby with the bathwater.
Thank you. Commissioner Henley?
Well, I would like to echo my fellow commissioner. I think it is great to see the amount of activity and effort and energy put into developing a plan that really is one that I think has evolved and evolved for the better over what seems to be now a number of years. A couple of things that I'll mention that hopefully isn't too repetitive. I think the, the attention to the resiliency of this community, I think, is one that's really important. I, I do believe that, you know, as citizens of our city, we do have to lean in and demand a certain level of service, but also entrust those that are, that are civil servants, and I mean that with our fire marshal, our water services, NDOT in terms of our transportation and other, and other mobility concerns. And I just want to make sure one thing I heard was correct and not incorrect, but the entrances and, and the entirety of the street at these entrances will be required to be improved. I know there was some comments about the $80,000 commitment going to a regional study, but per development, there are required street improvements that must happen before this development can go forward. Is that correct?
That's right. I'm afraid that the two things sort of got conflated, but the, there will be improvements made to Brick Church Lane to mitigate the, the traffic from this development, right? And then there is the, on top of those improvements that are to be made, the contribution to the regional study. And so they're not separate, I mean, they're separate things, they're, they're not on top of each other. So they're not just, it's not just a dedication of 80,000, there are improvements that are required consistent with the traffic study.
Yep. And so I will again echo my fellow commissioner. I think it is, there are some great recommendations here on page 24 and 25, particularly to things I think make for a desired environment. I think there, there are some things that need to be balanced. I think, you know, if this, if this road is an unsafe road, if we had all these community members come up here and say how unsafe this road was, that road's unsafe whether this development happens or not. I know a lot of those concerns about those incidents or accidents that we all fear and never want to hear about, but those can occur from people not living in this development. So I think we need to come in with that balanced sense and just, you know, demand better of our road networks. And I think a lot of the things that were asked of the developer in here are things that the community should be asking for regardless. And so hopefully a lot of those things get addressed no matter which way it goes today. I do think that, again, I'm going to keep echoing you, I hope you don't mind, but we, we do have to figure out how to accommodate our growth and our density somewhere. And as I look at the bottom line across, you know, the screen here, it says it meets the subdivision and zoning code requirements. And again, you know, our, our commission has a certain level of responsibility to uphold those things. I know there's some, some areas where we can be more liberal, but again, I think there's, there's a need to be considerate for those things. I think there's still time for this plan to evolve. I think there should be some continuing listening that's happening by the development team that I think they've shown a pattern of doing so. But I will say one thing for me, you know, the, the safety issue for people who live here is going to be one that will be of great concern with the electric fence. I mean, it just seems like a, a big liability issue, but there are people that are smarter than me and wealthier than me that know how to ensure that and hopefully come up with a solution that doesn't endanger anyone who would, who would live in this area, or even people who already live in the area. I think that's just something that needs to be addressed. I'll, I'll again, you know, pause so others can speak, but those are my comments.
Commissioner Haines? And Commissioner Henley, can you turn your mic off? I appreciate it. Commissioner, your mic, so it doesn't echo. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Haines?
So I feel like we're caught in a legal vortex between Baspearon Sims, Bradley Arant, and Toon Inchran and White, and I'm not a lawyer. So I would love our legal counsel to remind us of what our obligations are as a planning commission for subdivision regulations and to opine on Baspearon Sims' arguments versus Bradley Arant's arguments.
Well, just to, just to kind of reiterate where we are with the cases, obviously when this came to you all, this body in 2017, the advice you got was that if it meets the zoning regs, then, and the subdivision, zoning code and subdivision regulations, that you were compelled to approve the plan. When it went up to the Court of Appeals, the Court of Appeals enunciated some, articulated a little more ability and discretion of the body. On one hand, you can consider, you're obliged to consider all the elements of section three one two of the subdivision regulations, which we read off that list before. But on the other end of the spectrum, you can't make an individual determination of harmoniousness. Those were two elements that the court decided, and I thought they're very instructive. So that's going to be, there's, certainly there's going to be between, in that long list, there's going to be many different elements. And I think it's instructive that the court ultimately said, based on the highlighted terms, you know, the, the elements of the subdivision regulation, the planning commission had the authority to determine whether the concept plan complied with the adopted general plan. So you're, you're permitted to, even though, as staff said, the general plan is baked into the subdivision regulations, you're not prohibited from considering any of the elements in A through F in your decision. And that's kind of where you are.
Thank you. So at the end of the day, I was on this body when we studied Nashville Next. We argued and studied all kind of study areas in the White Creek area. At the end of the day, this was not one that we decided to change. We decided not to change it because of the interstate on one side, the IWD zoning on the other, Bradley Parkway on the other. And oftentimes I disagree with Dr. Sims, but tonight I agree with her. This is where we need some density. I do think we have used our latitude as a body to improve this plan. Is it perfect? No, it's not perfect. I think staff has put forth tireless efforts. I, I think the neighborhood has worked to get a better plan. Is this what you want? No, but this zoning's been in place forever and ever and ever. So given that and given the legal conformance, I'm going to support staff's recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner. So we are, now that concludes everyone speaking, but I, I think there's some other commissioners and vice chair, do you have some more questions?
I have another, yeah, I have a few questions. One for, one for I guess staff, and then a couple maybe to talk about the conditions that were suggested by the neighborhood. But, so when I looked at the traffic improvements, all of the improvements are happening on Brick Church Pike, which as Mina was explaining is quite a ways from the actual subject property. So, I mean, I guess there are improvements that have to happen to get into the property at Brick Church Lane, but it doesn't sound like any of the improvements are going to address any of the safety issues that the community has referenced. And I understand those issues are on that road regardless, but 180 new cars creates a lot more opportunity for problems.
They will be making improvements to the front, to their frontage, to bring up their frontage on their side to the major and Clifton Street Plan requirements on Brick Church Lane. There will be, they've also, they also have done a site, site distance study of both intersections, and it complies with site distance for both of the entrances as well. So they did an additional study on top of the TIS. And so there are improvements to their frontage along Brick Church Lane to bring it up to the major and Clifton Street Plan.
Okay. So I guess some of the conditions that the, that the neighborhood put forth, I'd be curious to hear from the developer, I think, about, you know, your, your, I think the statement was made that these were no longer applicable because of some of the changes, but, but the ones that they're suggesting, I think, go beyond just the roadway improvements. So particularly some of the ones that raise a concern from a health and safety perspective, and your thoughts about, you know, the, the lots along the electric fence.
I guess I need for you to articulate which of these. I mean, we're not going to agree to remove lots, okay? So to the extent they want us to remove lots, we're, we've got buffering along the electric fence, we've got buffering along the interstate. There's not a, there's not a safety issue there, in our view, and there's no subdivision requirement that requires us to deal with that. So to the extent that you're trying to impose requirements that are not contained in your subdivision regulations, that's, that's beyond your authority. Same thing with, you know, limiting the, the size of homes, what the exterior structures, those things are not within the power of the planning commission. Like I mentioned, the 2017 conditions are the things that we've already met with through NDOT. Again, Lisa's already mentioned sidewalks are not required on Brick Church Lane, so again, you can't add that as a condition. Again, they're complaining about the traffic study, but the traffic engineer from Metro has already said that the traffic study is adequate because of the lack of development in this area. So for those reasons, you know, we don't, we're not willing to get into a process of removing lots at this point, and we really don't think any of the other conditions are applicable at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Thank you.
Is that, is that it for me?
Yeah, no, I think that's, I mean, that's the, I think in the name of trying to find a way to, to make this work with the community. I mean, it's, it's rare that we have universal opposition and no support for a project. And, you know, I would just urge the developer to take these conditions seriously because I think this is the community's effort to, to put forth some potential compromise solutions.
Commissioner? Forgive me for, did I push this right? I hope I didn't, I'm not going to start the whole thing again.
You did.
I think that we have a regulatory review process that includes reviews by the fire marshal and NDOT and the like. And so if you wanted to include a condition that required a review regarding a turnaround or a review to ensure that an electrical fence is, meets the highest safety standards, there are Metro departments who would ensure that. And so I would just say that, you know, this is the first step of a three-step process, but if there is something that you would want to add to ensure that those concerns are addressed, we can include those as a condition.
That's correct.
I just, I just want to go on record just to kind of agree with, just because it's, it's kind of disappointing that the, yeah, we may not be able to enforce it, but, you know, regardless of where we're going with this decision, you know, these are, you realize the community is not for it, and any kind of effort you can make to improve the condition, you know, based on, you know, just a, a good neighbor, the obstinance about it is very disappointing. But, you know, like you said, we may not have the ability, but you do.
Any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion that will need a motion? Who wants to make a motion? Commissioner Johnson, you wanna make a motion?
Yes. I'd like to make motion to disapprove, uh, this plan based on it's not conformance of subdivision regulation three, one, two.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Counselee seconds it. Any other discussion?
Um, three, just make sure I.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Make sure I understand three, one, two, just to be clear.
Really quick here. Do you have to do that, or I'm sorry if you have to?
Yes, uh, the subdivision regulation three, one, two, conformance of the applicable rules and regulations, including all the general plan and, uh, uh, A, B, C, D, E, F, uh, the earlier, uh, Mr. Dickerson, uh, listed.
Um, I will say that, um, the Commissioner outlined in her first discussion all the reasons for she believed that A through E, and I'm assuming you would incorporate that into your motion.
Thank you. And so we have a proper motion and a second. The motion, so here we are procedurally, the motion is to disapprove. So if you vote aye, you vote to disapprove. If you vote no, you're basically saying no to disapproval. So. All right. It is a motion to disapprove. So if you vote aye, you vote to disapprove the project. And that's opposite of approval. You're voting against the staff's report. Correct, Alex?
Correct, but it, just to be clear, if you vote no, you're not voting to approve. That would take a sec.
No, that would take another motion. So if this doesn't pass by a majority, then we'll have to have another motion, just like normal. All right, so everybody comfortable with the procedure? Okay. We can, we might as well do hands, cause, uh, we're probably, um, voice would be really hard with math. So, uh, all in favor of disapproval, raise your hand. Okay. There's, that's five, and then all opposed to disapproval. Five to three, it's disapproved. All right, so we are on to item 11, but we've been here, um, for two hours and 45 minutes. And so we, I, I know that several commissioners have asked for a restroom break, and so we're gonna take probably a 10-minute break, and we'll be back. We're all volunteers on the commission, so we really do appreciate that very much. All right, so we finished item seven, and we have five more to go. So we're on, um, we were, we're on item 11, but, um, we, we have a, a special request, uh, from a, from a staff member, and so we would like to move up item 17, commissioners. And so what this would take would be, uh, to suspend the rules and I, and, and move up item 17 because of a staff member's need to leave early. So, um, if, if, I hope that's okay, is, is there objection to, um, so without objection, uh, we're gonna take item 17 out of order, and then we'll go back and take item 11, 12, 16, and 21, just to be clear. So without objection, we will consider item number 17.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Eric Hammer with the Planning Department, and I'll be presenting item 17, a request for an overall height modification for the second and Peabody project. The request is for an overall height modification to allow two residential buildings of 32 stories and 36 stories, and one hotel building of 18 stories on this combined site. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. The zoning for this area is the downtown code, or DTC, and the project is located within the Lafayette sub-district, at the border of the adjacent Sobro and Rutledge Hill sub-districts. The policy for the site is T6 downtown neighborhood. Note that there was a policy amendment considered for this area that has since been withdrawn. Upon revision of the project design, staff has determined that the amendment is no longer necessary, as the revised height modification request is consistent with the goals of the policy. When using policy, we review the goals of each policy holistically. The project has been revised to address policy goals, including the supplemental policies need for a more meaningful publicly accessible open space. The project also shifts to a predominantly residential use with active ground floor uses, and generally low, lowers the proposal's height by 185 feet. The downtown neighborhood policy, note, in the pink hatch on this map, uh, preserves and creates, uh, diverse downtown neighborhoods that are compatible with the general character of surrounding developments. T6 downtown neighborhood areas contain high-density residential and mixed-use development. This project site is located directly adjacent to T6 downtown core policy and the Sobro sub-district. The adjacent Sobro sub-district noted in red across Peabody Street to the north allows for 30 stories of building height by right and unlimited height through the bonus height program. Here are renderings of Second Avenue, or the facade on Second Avenue, excuse me, that show the previous version side by side with the current version of the project. The two drawings on the screen are at the same scale. As you can see, there has been a significant redesigned effort, including reductions in height, better spacing between buildings, and park space throughout the city block. The project has changed programs from predominantly office to predominantly residential, with a commitment to not turn residential units into short-term rentals. The revised design provides a large publicly accessible open space to the surrounding neighborhood of 1.37 acres in size, covering approximately half the site. Here are two site plans side by side. The previous version of the project, which is going to be on your left here, had a total of 0.14 acres of pervious surfaces, versus the new version has 0.80 acres of pervious surfaces. The pervacity of the site has been increased dramatically with the revised plan. The character of the pervious surfaces is much more park-like. These views show different qualities of urban, of open space proposed between the two versions. The previous design has a, has much more of the site's open space located between the two proposed buildings, separated from the street or under roof overhangs. The new design places emphasis on substantial green urban park anchoring the full edge of Second Avenue. The overall height modification process replaced the special exception or variance process overseen by the Board of Zoning Appeals for overall building height in the downtown area in 2015. I would note that this is different from the bonus height program. The process for an overall height modification is outlined in the downtown code. The process requires that the executive director of the planning department first make a determination as to whether reasonable efforts have been made to utilize all available bonus height programs before the modification request is considered by the planning commission. The applicant originally filed this project earlier this year, has held their first community meeting on February 26th. As a result of discussions with planning and the surrounding community, planning staff recommended indefinite deferral for the project at that time per the project team's request. Over the past six months, the applicant has completely redesigned the site, revisited the design of the project, and the site plan is in response to the identified need for more green, open park space in this neighborhood of downtown. As the design was revisited, the determination letter was updated, relevant to the new submittal. The applicant elected to hold a second community meeting to share the new design on July 29th. On August 17th, the applicant went before MDHA's Design Review Committee for a recommendation on the height modification. The MDHA Design Review Committee voted in favor with none opposed to recommend conceptual approval to modify the height as requested. As part of the process for the overall height modification, the downtown code states the planning commission shall review and may grant additional height for exceptional design, including but not limited to unique architecture, exceptionally strong streetscapes, and improvement of the project's relationship to surrounding properties. The project site plan contains 1.37 acres of open space lined with active ground floor retail and restaurant uses, all open to the public. All the parking is below grade, with entrances to the garage off of the Third Avenue drop-off and off of Peabody Street. All loading will take place in the below-grade garage. Below-grade parking helps activate the ground floor on all four frontages and the park space. This slide shows the proposed materiality and facade articulation of the three buildings along the Third Avenue frontage. This view shows the proposed project looking towards the west elevation from Peabody Street. This is a slide showing the skyline viewed from two directions. The top looks north from the southern loop of the interstate, and the bottom looks west from the east bank area across the river. All white buildings are existing buildings. You can see the pink where several projects with significant height have been approved along Korean Veterans Boulevard, and where projects have been approved or are under construction in the nearby area. Second and Peabody is shown in the orange on the right side of the top image and the left side of the bottom image. Proposals of significant height have also been approved within this general area, including the Peabody Union Building, shown here as a block massing with context. This building sits on the river adjacent to the Rolling Mill Hill Trolley Barns and is adjacent to the KBB Bridge. Additionally, there is the Fairmont Hotel Project, which is a 36-story and 14-story hotel complex approved in 2019 by the MDHA Design Review Committee. Other projects with significant height have been approved in the general area. KBB's intersection with Hermitage is shown in the foreground of this image. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Recommended conditions are shown, uh, on the slide above and are additionally available within the staff report for this case. Of note, they require the proposed open space to be publicly accessible, and that no short-term rentals are permitted in the proposed residential units. Staff finds that the most recent project proposal meets three conditions outlined in the overall height modification. Glazing at the ground levels of all frontages and park spacing, a high-quality material palette, and unique structural grid articulation of the facades fulfill the criteria of unique architecture. The project also meets and exceeds the criteria for exceptionally strong streetscapes through its publicly accessible open park space that permeates the whole site and is supported by a, active ground floor uses. Lastly, the project's relationship to surrounding properties is improved through the addition of the aforementioned park space, the proposed realignment of Leah Avenue, and the placement of all parking and loading below grade. Staff finds that this project proposal is consistent with the goals of the T6 downtown neighborhood policy, and that it will efficiently add more residential units to the demand present in the downtown urban core, while also adding a substantial neighborhood park to the sub-district. The growing density of the downtown neighborhood will be supported by future major transit centers, including one located walking distance three blocks away on Lafayette Street, helping to encourage alternative transportation modes to serve the surrounding community. For these reasons, staff recommends approval with conditions for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And now, uh, we will open this item for public hearing. Oh, hold on. We will open this item for public hearing, and the applicant, come on up, and, um, you have 10 minutes, and you can save two minutes for rebuttal of the 10.
Yes, I'd like to do that. My name is Jonathan Cardella from Cube 3 Architecture, 111 Southwest Third Street in Miami, Florida. I'm here representing Congress Group on the representation of the project. Thank you very much. Could we bring up the, uh, presentation, please? And I'm gonna do six minutes on a formal presentation and a video at the end that shows you walking through the park to get the real feeling for it. Uh, while he's pulling that up, I just wanna, uh, say we're honored here to be, to be here presenting to you. One of the things we look at on all of our projects is how to, uh, make developments that are also good for the community, as well as, uh, for, uh, good development in urban centers. Uh, you can see here on the first slide, as you go Peabody Street and Leah Avenue, uh, those were intended to be two greenways that go up from the river. Uh, and the idea here is that we create that link across Second Avenue that really creates that open public green space and creates a link that allows for the two greenways to have a lateral connection that's not only at the river, but also up in the urban fabric. If we go to the next slide, uh, as we develop the project, uh, you can see, uh, item number one is what the zoning really defines, which is a low-rise extrusion that comes up that can occupy the majority of the site, like the Texas wraps that you've seen on other projects. We didn't feel that was the right thing to do for the community. We wanted to create more openness, more light and air going through the building. So as you go to slide, item two here, you can see it, it divides into three items, then it gets extruded, but that wasn't enough. We wanted to really get Second Avenue to be almost 100% greenway. So what we did is we splayed the buildings to open it up in order to provide more light and air and transparency through the site, while giving a substantial contribution of open green space back to the neighborhood. Uh, let's go to the next slide. You can see in context of the city here how it sits within, uh, the context with the opening splay as it opens up towards the river, and also reflects some of the angles that are happening with the planning of the roadways. So it feels like it's part of the urban fabric overall. One more. Uh, this is an important slide, cause, uh, as we went through this, you can see by the kite-shaped buildings, by opening it up, it not only provided almost 100% of greenway along Second Avenue, but what it also did is it allowed for us to create openness, uh, to the site, where 48% of the site is open to the air or undercover where there's terrace seating for restaurants and other activities, which represents the blue and the, uh, kinda, uh, yellowish, uh, color on there. That's 59,000.7, uh, square feet of open green space associated with this development. Let's go one more. Uh, in addition, we wanted permitability to the site. We wanted the neighborhood to be able to come to the site and participate in the site, be on it, and really be engaged into the activity. So while we have the urban fabric that goes around the edge, all the light blue lines show how people can go from one corner of the site through it and really participate in what we're creating here for retail and active uses on the site. One more. Uh, this slide goes through the key porings here, and we wanted to show the ground floor here. All the pink areas are retail or, uh, restaurant areas for food and beverage, and you can see how there's permability with entries throughout the entire site with the public lobbies facing towards, uh, Third Avenue, and are only the blue areas, uh, or the purple area for the hotel. So we've really worked hard to activate and create these avenues for people to come to the building and participate at its edge and really be involved in the project. One more. Uh, and as you see here, the green landscape, uh, this is a large urban park. It's intended to have a variety of uses within it, activities that are passive but also active within it, in order to create energy that the neighborhood wants to come down and participate, go to the restaurants, but also use the elements within the parks, such as the play areas. Uh, if we go to the next slide, uh, and one more after this, you can see here in one quadrant, we're providing, uh, where the, uh, upper-left corner, a little cafe space that's for the park area. So somebody can come down in the morning, get a coffee, get a juice, go into the park. But we also wanted to create, uh, engaging elements within the park, so the lighter green area there in the upper right-hand image are elements, are sculptural elements that you, people can go lay on during the day, kids can climb on, to really engage the public to say, hey, come down here, participate in with our project. Uh, if we go to one more slide, uh, as you come down to the, uh, Third Avenue side, uh, along the entire perimeter are areas for tables and seating for restaurants to spill out onto these areas, create an engaging edge to the building at the ground floor. And the way we thought about this is the ground floor is all public, the second floor is what we call the semi-public, which is for the residents. We want them to become, able to come down here, look on the park, for people in the park to see activity on the first two floors of the building, and really create a transparency here that creates a seamless quality across the site. One more forward. As we come up to the other quadrant of the site, you can see the inclusion of water features, and the water features we felt were important for a variety of reasons. One, it provides a little bit of white noise, so when you're in these parks, it takes away some of the traffic noise. It creates areas that kids wanna come down, put their hands in the water, participate into it. It gathers people around it. It really gives that energy that the neighborhood could really participate in a project. Uh, we also created this bridge link that comes through. There's 30-foot topography between one side and the other. So, uh, we wanted to create links that come through, so you can be on the top of the waterfall looking down. Underneath it, there may be some hanging seating, so you can go down there during lunch and hang out. Uh, let's go one more. Uh, now the Leah Avenue corner really wanted to be a public asset here. We, we shifted the road, made a better alignment, and create a, a substantial public green space not only in the project, but along that edge. You can also see we moved the sidewalk from the You can also see we moved the sidewalk from the edge of the street. So as pedestrians are walking to this site, there's a little bit more protection and they feel, really feel like they can come here and engage into the property. Let's go one more. And then the center green space. Center green space has so many opportunities. We can program events in that space during the weekends, farmer markets could be there. We also have the restaurants and the retail around there while somebody's eating, the kids could be playing out in the park, we can watch it. It gives that total engagement, which I think is what we're trying to look for in our urban environments, to really create opportunities for people to participate with new development. If we go one more now, I'm going to walk you around the site and if you see the little red dot, that's generally where we're standing and looking at the project. So the first one that we're going to come to is Peabody and Second Avenue. If we go to the next slide, you can see here, we're looking over the site and you can see the extent of the green space and the material that we're putting in there. For the planting, we wanted different size, shape of leaf, sheen of leaf, so that you create a depth to the landscape. We imagine that, you know, spaces like this are good because it allows for that soft urban wildlife of butterflies, ducks to come into the area so that everybody can coexist together within it. If we go one more slide forward, we're going to come to the drop-off on Third Ave. Go one more. And you can see as you come in here, we wanted to create an experience of arriving here. So the exoskeleton of the center building creates these beautiful arches that come down that as you arrive, there's this tug at your heart. It's this kind of sense that you're at a special location. You can see one of the residential building's canopy comes out and this is where the more urban address comes, where people are arriving, coming into the building. Let's go one more. Now, we're going to come down to the corner of Peabody and Third. With this topography change, if we go one more forward, we want to find opportunities, for example, on that corner, that little bit of retail space, that coffee or juice place, somebody can stop by in the morning, becomes part of that walk from one part of the city to the other. But then the upper terrace becomes seating for the restaurant and then that third terrace is the fitness center for the community so that people can be out there and that you're having activity not only at the ground floor and the entrance to the buildings, but up multiple stories to really give energy into this project. So go one more. Come up to the corner of Second and Peabody, you're going to see the perspective standing right at the corner. If we go one more, you see here the thinness of the building. We really wanted to take that and taper that building down so that as you come up to that corner, while there's urban fabric there, you're automatically right into the park. You come by that edge and you can flow into the green space and really participate in the project. And you can see the first two levels are those more transparent levels with the activities of not only for residents but the retail at the ground floor. Let's go one more. And now, we're going to come into the park. Go ahead. You can see here, this is a substantial green space that has a variety of program elements in it for the community. The water features allow for the kids to engage, the sculptural elements, the open green space for event activities, also frisbee if somebody wants to be out there. It gives those opportunities for life, not only for the residents at the tower but for the neighborhood, which we are really excited about. One more. Going to keep walking into the parks. Now, we're in Center Park looking back at the tower. Go one more. And here you can see, we're looking back at the retail in the North Tower at the ground floor and restaurants and you're seeing a glimpse of the patio that would be at the base of the hotel for a signature restaurant facing right onto that space. One more forward. Can I move a little bit further into the park and let's go ahead? And you can see the waterfall features and the terraces as you come down into this green space and the types of opportunities for those little nooks for restaurants to come in and people to hang out within there. We'll go very quickly, just two more slides and we'll be wrapped up here.
Unfortunately, we, your time is up and we have strict rules about, you know, what we do.
I agree. There's only one more image, we're good. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Sorry about that. All right. Yeah, if you'll wipe it down. Thank you very much. All right. So is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? Come on up and then as a reminder, please wipe down after you're done. You've got two minutes and state your name and address. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Michael Hayes. I live at 4409 Wonder Place in Nashville. I'm with CB Ragland Company. Our family has owned property in this neighborhood and been investing in this area since 1919. I have vivid memories of the neighborhood over about the last 40 years, participated in the community plan update just over a decade ago and wow, we never envisioned this quality of development coming to our neighborhood. This is such an improvement over the last plan. The quality that you've seen today, I hope it comes to fruition. I thank Dean for this vision and the entire team. It's really been fun to watch the evolution. I'm sorry we didn't get to see the video a few minutes ago of the walkthrough of the walkthrough of the neighborhood and that they ran out of town, out of time, because I'm sure it would have been really, you know, cool. So again, thank all of you guys for your time this evening. It's been really interesting to watch what y'all are doing and I hope you support, I hope this commission will support the project. It would be a tremendous addition to our neighborhood to see this come to fruition. So, thank you, y'all.
Thank you. Come on up after we do the wipe down. Mr. Turner.
Good evening, everyone.
Do you care if I leave this on? It's, yes, yes, it'd be fine to leave it on. That's great.
Okay.
Or take it off.
Whatever you want to do, Mr. Turner. Sorry for the scratchy throat. I haven't had a drink in about three, a drink of water, about three and a half hours. Sorry.
Don't believe that.
I'm Tom Turner. I'm with the Nashville Downtown Partnership and I want to say that we really support this, this project going forward, Second and Peabody, the work from the Congress Group. I think it hits the three scenarios that we need, exceptional design, great streetscape, and that, and that third, really kind of that improved infrastructure with the realignment of, of Lee at Third Avenue. So I don't think I could do a better job than, than staff did or the, the project leader. But I have 55 seconds. So really, I think we really want to say that we support the staff review and the staff conditions and appreciate your thoughtful consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good to see you. I don't think I've seen Mr. Turner in 10 years here. Thank you for coming.
It's a big project.
Come on up. Welcome.
Thanks. Good evening. My name is Kevin Tyner and my address is 500 Second Avenue. Thank you all for your service. So as a business owner adjacent to the Congress Group's proposed Second Peabody Project, I'm speaking to express our full support for the project. In addition to its attractive design, the commitment for roughly 60,000 square feet of public space is impressive and will also serve as much-needed community center for neighbors while providing an aesthetically stunning evolution to our area of Sobro. As our neighborhood experiences inevitable transformation, it's our sincere hope that the city encourages and promotes more projects like this that prioritize neighborhood enhancements for everybody. Not only do we think this is a stunning project and a great project for the Sobro area, it's also a great project for Nashville. I hope you'll vote to approve this project. Thank you for your talk.
Come on up.
Everybody wiped it down. All righty. Roger Brown, 407 Driftwood. I live, I have property right down the road from this site. Why do I support this project? You know, this will help the neighborhood. It will work for the betterment of the neighborhood. Currently, it's in sort of a warehouse, a metal building. As I own property down the road and have businesses that employ people that's less than .3 miles away from this site, we need a lot more housing. We need housing for people to work, for us to live. Earlier, y'all had something out in the rural area and we're talking about neighborhoods getting taken over by proven sites like this where it's the right site for the right development. You're going to take and create affordable housing by having demand, fulfilling that demand. With Amazon, Oracle, and every other business from the US coming here, we need more housing. People are upset about, you know, the inability to have affordable housing once again. We need to have this because this is the right project, the right site. It's funny, I actually remember, I guess it was in 2015, 2016, when City Lights was here, in front of the same board, using the same process to get its zoning, to make it higher. As a business owner, we wanted that also because we need jobs. But more importantly, this site is going to have parks, it's going to have open space, which is going to allow our workers and employees to have places to go. I commend this board for doing what they're doing. And, you know, I feel sorry for you that you have to go through this all the time and thank y'all for your service.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Let's make sure, anyone else wishing to speak in support? All right, saying none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up. Welcome.
Thank you. Are we wiping or is that? Huh? That's already happened? Good evening. My name is Doug Berry. I'm an attorney with Miller Martin Law Firm in Nashville, 401 Commerce Street, and I represent three, four owners of condominiums at the City Lights Complex. Steve and Lawrence Snyder, Andrew Decker and Gregory Breitz. Mr. Decker is going to speak in his own behalf tonight, but I would request six minutes to speak on behalf of my other three clients. Is that?
Well, generally, so here's the situation on that. Generally, it's a neighborhood group that you represent, not particular clients.
In this case, it's particular.
And it's always five minutes. It's not six minutes.
Five is five.
And then, under our rules, just to be strict, I mean, I know you're an attorney, you're supposed to give prior notice to the commission to request the additional minutes.
I'll give it to you in two minutes. Listen closely.
Well, we'll start your time over again. Let's start it over and then.
I submitted a written brief talking about the legal problems with this commission's even exercising its authority in this way. I'm assuming tonight you're not going to concede the appointment, neither am I. We're moving now to the criteria for approving this project. There are very specific criteria for granting modifications of standards under the downtown code. It's kind of like a variance light. By the way, the planning commission has no authority to grant variances or, under state law, any, any authority to grant modifications of standards, but flying blind, this is what you're doing. It has to be based on site-specific issues. Issues is what we now call, what used to be called, problems. There's been no identification of site-specific problems of this site by either the applicant or the planning staff. Second, the standard may be modified insofar as the intent of the standard is being met by the modification. Well, that's, that's nonsense. The height standards, that's what's at issue here. You've got an eight-foot standard height and 11 feet, excuse me, eight stories and 11 stories with the bonus height, and now you're talking about making a triple that many stories in a project, completely subverting the purpose of that portion of the zoning code and the downtown plan. The applicant, this would be unprecedented. I've attached to our brief the list of this commission's prior decisions in this area. There are some where you granted nothing like this, not multiples of the height, but down around the Circle South area, certainly some which are adjacent to downtown. And by the way, where there's no neighbors nearby who were affected by this. Whether or not this achieves a better design than the previous version, what in the world difference does that make? Same developer, they've exceeded the staff's demand to get their project approved. We urge you strongly, and people are going to testify about the burden on their property, urge you strongly to deny this request.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Who wants to go next? Welcome. Come on up.
My name's Harris Andrew Decker. I'm a resident at City Lights. I moved here from New York where there are a lot of tall buildings. I'm familiar with tall buildings. I spent a lot of money to acquire a unit and finish the unit based in large part on the idea that we'd be living near downtown but not in downtown. We'd be in a neighborhood that was clearly described by the downtown code as, in one case, the Lafayette Sub District is primarily low-rise and should act as a transition from the height of the core in Sobro to single-family neighborhood and in describing Rutledge Hill as a variety of residential and civic historic buildings, largely intact and new buildings of complementary height, scale, and massing. So when you look at the project that's being proposed, and I refer back to Section 2C of the slides that the developer presented where they show you their orange buildings and you compare that with the upcoming, what we'll hear, I assume, sometime soon about the Cumulus Site, and you can see a mass of buildings moving out from downtown. So downtown is moving. Now, perhaps that's what the inevitable future of Nashville is all about, but in this particular case, to disrupt and fundamentally change the nature of this neighborhood and to fundamentally do it in an ad hoc way that rewards speculative real estate investment, does not respect the people who made early commitments to move to this neighborhood, to live near downtown as part of a neighborhood, to destroy a community, to destroy this neighborhood, I strongly, strongly recommend that you oppose this, that you do not approve it because it will fundamentally change the nature of this neighborhood. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming down. Thank you for wiping the. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, one and all, for all your service. We've sent you lots of letters. You know who we are through our letters. My name is Bruce Camber and I moved in the city two years ago into City Lights. We all love and respect the work that Congress Group is doing with the Four Seasons. We have gotten to know Dean Strattoli from the CEO of Congress Group and he's a very nice person and his staff is all, they're all very nice people. We like them. And who could, could feel otherwise about the project they're proposing? It is Sex and Sizzle Incorporated. It has so many valuable properties and valuable features. There's no question about that. The question is, one, it's 300% over code at least, even with the other kinds of modifications that Eric is suggesting, there are problems with it. It is above a historic district and it just will dominate the entire hill. But more than dominate the entire hill, it will also stimulate other developers, as it has already, with the Centrum Group and the owner, Mr. Slavin, who's proposing a 45-story building in one of those corners. So the speculation is going on and it's going on strongly. So we're not dealing just with, with the Congress Group, we're also dealing with Centrum now and many others later. This city is a precious little city. It's going to be Sex and Sizzle. It's going to attract people like this, all from all over the world. We don't have to compromise an entire neighborhood. You know, there's, there's plenty of time to get correct development here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you for wiping it down and then.
Why not?
We'll get the next person.
All right. Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi. My name is Chad Berry. I live in City Lights too and just recently purchased there and kind of have a unique perspective and thank you guys. We chose Nashville, we just moved out from LA. Chose Nashville because of what you guys have built thus far. So I want to say that you guys are in a very, I don't envy your position. We moved here and we chose Nashville because of what you guys have built and really, I urge you guys to protect it. People coming from massive cities like LA want you to pay attention to the infrastructure changes that things like this make. I mean, you have small streets in this little corridor. We overlooked the Titans game that happened the other night and saw an ambulance get stopped up in traffic for 10 minutes. I mean, if, if you don't have thoughtful planning to the infrastructure that things like this bring, and we want the development, we love the neighborhood, but people coming to jobs like Oracle and Revance and. like Oracle and Revance, and you don't always want to be in high-rises, you want to have little pockets of the neighborhood where you're not surrounded by towers and have 40 stories of elevator rides. So it's good to have a variance, a variation of residential communities, and that's what I want you guys to protect. So we chose this neighborhood for a reason, we could have been in 505, we could have been downtown, but we saw the zoning that you guys had in Rutledge Hill, and that's why we chose the area. So, just take that in mind, make sure that, like, emergency services, we've seen what happened in LA, it's a mess. Nobody wants that here, and you guys shouldn't allow that to happen in your city, okay?
Thank you. Oh, yeah, please wipe it down.
Can I indulge two things? I have a statement of my own, and then I have a statement that was sent with me by Elizabeth Elkins, President of Historic Nashville, of Historic Nashville, may I read her statement? Is that allowed, or not?
No, what we'll do is, you can turn it in as a...
Okay, she's already turned it in, and she wanted to be here...
Yeah, no, we don't allow that.
Sorry? You do not allow it? Okay. All right, so can I get my start time again?
Let's start her over. There you go. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Hattie Bryant, I live in City Lights, I'm a homeowner, and City Lights is one block from the Second and Peabody project that you're looking at today. Out of my deck, I will see every inch of what is going to be happening. From my front porch, I'll see what the gentleman just showed you. Let me just remind you, that the developers of City Lights asked for a height waiver, which you denied. Now we have wealthy outsiders who are coming and asking you to do for them what you denied Nashville builders, and one of those builders that was denied lives in our own building, and he lives in City Lights, and he's our friend. Please do not bend to outsiders, give them what you wouldn't even give our own Nashville builders. Maybe the Congress Group, while building Four Seasons project, has decided it now deserves what you have denied to others. I have seen two of their proposals, the first received so much opposition that they had to pull it back with what, to what you see today. At both of their presentations to the community, there were commercial property owners in the room, just like ones you've heard tonight, who praised the plans, of course they praised this. If I were a commercial property owner downtown, in juxtaposition to this project, I would want it too. And by the way, some, one of the gentlemen said Sobro. We are not talking about Sobro, y'all, we're talking about Lafayette. While the developers showed what you saw is lovely, and we all agree it's lovely, it belongs in the core, it doesn't belong across the street from Rutledge Hill. Now, in your own documents, it says on page 38, there's a height limit. We've heard the arguments about what, why they should be able to increase, those arguments aren't good enough, we've already heard the attorney say that. I'm asking you, please do not change our neighborhood, we love our small-scale neighborhood. Thank you for denying this request.
Thank you.
Hey there, I'm Greg Brett, I too am a resident and owner at Rutledge, at City Lights, and specifically, we moved to City Lights based upon the fact that Rutledge Hill was supposed to be a unique place, and when we found out that the developer wanted to build something bigger, and you all had already told them no, it was like, oh, this is perfect, this is going to be the neighborhood that we want to be in. And, I get the height variance, and I get the notion that, hey, if you do some good things, maybe you get a little bit more, but going from a little bit more to a ton more, I'm worried about the precedent it sets, and as you've already seen, right next door to us, they're talking about building what will now be the new tallest building in Nashville. Quickly, on that particular property, I think one of the reasons they're getting some height variances, they have underground parking. Underground parking is great, that particular one, if I remember correctly, is going to hold 991 parking spaces, there are 880-ish units, presumably not all one-bedrooms, there's also going to be employees that work in the building, there's going to be a hotel, I have no idea, we have parking issues on our own, we've got 71 units, 140-something parking places, and we have issues in our small building. So, there will not be, and there is no parking in the downtown area where we are, other than on the street, and it is taken up by construction workers, starting at 3:30 in the morning. So there will, if people want to come down and go to the restaurant and visit, they better Uber, because there won't be any place to park their car. So, I used to hear my dad talk about a goat rodeo, and I had no idea what it was, I got a sense now that what you all's job is, is really being in a goat rodeo, I appreciate you all's service, and, you know, it's a hell of a problem to have, that everybody wants to come to this city, but I hope we find a way to do it in a way that makes sense for everybody. Thank you all.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? All right, seeing none, unfortunately, you ran out of time for rebuttal, so you don't have two minutes for rebuttal. And the council member is not here, and so seeing no one else wishing to speak, I don't believe the council member's here, do you see Director, no? Okay. Yeah, Kathleen?
He came earlier.
Oh, he came, yes, he testified earlier. Okay. So seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. Mr. Tibbs, you want to go first?
Yep, it's my turn, right? Well, let me ask you a couple of questions first, about the historic properties that were brought up, could you just talk about that, I know you've mentioned, could you do that for me, please?
Sure. So I did some research, and we have a lot of staff who were here at the time that the sub-districts were drawn, which is actually a huge benefit to understand our thinking. And, the heights in this area were generally kept lower than the rest of downtown, and to be clear, we consider this downtown Nashville. They were kept lower for two reasons. One was an economic reason, we were pursuing plans in Sobro and the Gulch, and we wanted to ensure that those areas would thrive and grow, and at that point, 10 years ago, they weren't, you know, built out to the level that they are today. And then there were some concerns about the really important historic resources, just over here, I'm a little disoriented, because there aren't windows, over in Rutledge Hill, this is a very special part of our community, and I have been so pleased to learn, over the past four to five months, many of those properties have been purchased and placed under easements, to ensure that they will be protected over the long term. And I do think there was some concern at the time, that increased development in this area would be disruptive economically, but also would put pressure there, and so, you know, I have, you know, been working with Tim over at Historic, to figure out the tools that we would need to protect Rutledge Hill, and it is happening today. And so, nevertheless, when KVB was drawn, and the Sobro sub-district was developed, those were developed about a block away, with 30-story limits and unlimited bonus height, and so we envisioned that areas very close to this portion of town would have downtown-type development.
Thank you. Yeah, I was concerned about that was brought up. Yeah, this is actually, to me, a very exquisite solution, actually. I think it kind of reminds, I don't think we normally get a lot of developers who'll come in with some creative solutions to being able to make a more pedestrian-friendly, you know, interaction with the community. I kind of differ with someone who said, I actually think this is more of an enhancement than you would typically get, because typically it'd be, try to be more mass, and it would be this big block mass, but this is really encouraging a lot more infiltration through the block. Kind of reminds me of the spirit of Capital View, you know, where you don't even see it, except there, where they've really tried to activate the street with different things for people as they kind of walk around it. I, you know, really liked the way the angles were, I guess I would ask, did we, you might make sure it's a win study, that, I don't know if they were verified that, that because of the use of having, you know, the restaurants and commercial on the first floor, you don't want them to get blown out every day, but, you know, you don't see this a lot in Nashville, I feel like, almost just the opposite. I think a lot of times when we get a lot of developers, they're not thinking about the city, and not really, you know, just trying to mass it up, and, you know, the breakdown of the, you know, kind of having an exoskeleton kind of showing up, I mean, that's a unique architecture, you know, using those two things, it's something unique for it, but what I hope it will be is more of a catalyst, so that developers will understand, you know, to get more, we want more, and I think the, you know, the very thoughtful approaches to it, using water. Oh, now, is the water used for retention pond, or is it just strictly designed? I mean, so that even gives them opportunity to have more green space if necessary, you need it to, but the fact that you've kind of brought that into an urban setting, I mean, we need more urban, you know, urban parks in Nashville, I mean, we're trying to figure out what to do with a little square stamp, you know, because we need these, and when designers think about it, you know, that's the thing, it's not just something that's just put there, it's something that's really thought through, so, I think, you know, actually, I think this should be commended. I do know that this is a large departure, you know, regarding the height opportunities for it, but it is directly across, on that one block you see, it's directly across from it, and I could see where, you know, we have a, you know, that this is the area that we want to do it in, someone brought up about density of housing, this is where you'd want to do it, and especially bringing more to the urban core. I know, someone mentioned affordable housing, I don't know if that's part of it or not, but that's, still getting housing here, this is where we'd want it to be, as far as a use for it. Yeah, I'm actually very, you know, I think this was a good solution, I made some other notes, right-sized housing, I actually think it would enhance the neighborhood, I do, you know, there is the opportunity of a precedent, but I think a thoughtful precedent that could be moved for it, and, you know, keeping the Rutledge Hill, which is still a little bit further up, protected, I think is important, so that, you know, there may be some kind of, you know, restrictions for there, but honestly, the worst thing is when things are just demolished, you know, and this, I don't really, I feel like because of the pedestrian and the streetscape, that you will have more involvement of the community, as opposed to, you know, trying to make it lower and more massive, so, I like this.
Thank you, Councilman.
I don't know if Mr. Tibbs has realized that he's not a politician, for all those words. There's a lot of words to say that you like it, but that's a great architectural perspective on it. I like the architecture, I think it is unique, I love the landscape park plan that is being laid out, I kept getting disoriented, because I keep wanting this to be closer to the Capitol, so I could walk to it when I am stressed out, Greg is probably thinking the same thing, this should be closer to where we get stressed out. But could you show me the overview with the other buildings again? Because I did keep getting turned around, and if you could kind of talk to me, talk me through the boundaries again with the height, and how close is this to where the lines are and things, because I'm just not as familiar with the downtown code in this portion of the area.
Certainly, Councilmember, we'll try that again. The best I can do in this specific slide here is to note these lines right here, these are going to be sub-district lines, as well as policy lines in this case.
Is that the maroon ones? I'm sorry, I'm not seeing that.
We're not seeing your cursor, can you use colors?
Yeah, I certainly can, so, if you see those black lines that are bisecting the pink area from the red area, those are generally the sub-district lines, right to the project, to the right side of the project on this particular map, that's the break between the Lafayette and the Rutledge Hill sub-districts. So what does that mean? So, Sobro, which is the sub-district that's right to the north of this, as was indicated before, is 30 stories with a unlimited maximum, the maximum is however much physics will support, with the bonus height that's available. And then, on this particular site, it's eight stories, with the opportunity to bonus to 11 stories typically, and then across the street in Rutledge Hill, I believe it's six stories, with the opportunity to earn an additional one story to seven. So the site we're talking about today is within the Lafayette sub-district, you can see here in the purple, but it is essentially at the intersection of all those sub-districts.
Okay, and to make sure, I've tried to conserve paper today, so Tower 2, Tower 3, could you give me those height, the stories again, I can't read them on here.
Of the proposed project, Councilmember?
Yes, sir.
Let me... So 32 stories, 36 stories, and 18 stories, and I'll show you an elevation of how that looks.
Commissioner, may I, just on the question of sort of the height modification process, and also how we think about bonus height, so there are very clear standards for how we consider height modifications, and we can consider them in the downtown code. So council essentially gave to the planning commission the ability to make decisions around the downtown code and the height modification process, if you want to hear about that more, you can speak to our attorney.
No, I just wanted to make sure I had the right numbers when thinking about this, because I guess what I am concerned about is, I understand the carrot and stick, and I advocated for that in my own district on the Charlotte Corridor, but what I am concerned about is, while this is a lovely park and a lovely design, I'm concerned about how much bonus we are doing. That's what's making me a little uneasy here, is that it's like a double-bubble bonus here, that's what I'm trying to get comfortable with, and I know, because I've been on the council six years, that if we say you've got to take it down some, then they're going to say we lose the park, and you say, okay, well, right, you know, that merry-go-round. And so, I want to hear what everybody else has to say, but I wanted to make sure that I had these numbers right, that they are in the area that it's eight plus a bonus to 11, correct? And what we are considering is a whole lot more than 11, and, I mean, in one case, tripling 11, over-tripling, math is hard. That's what I'm trying to get comfortable with. I think that we do have the ability to add the bonus, I do think that they have met some of the criteria to get a bonus, I am uncomfortable with the bonus we're talking about. But I really like the design.
May I offer just a, so, from a planning staff perspective, there are a lot of different ways that we can assess whether or not the underlying zoning is appropriate, and give recommendations and have dialogue with council. Typically, we would go in and do a whole-area assessment, and in this case, given the housing deficiencies that we have in this city, given the adjacency that this site is to a planned transit station, and given the proximity to downtown, I am quite sure that the planning staff would be recommending some increase in the underlying zoning here. I am not comfortable doing that in a whole-scale way, I think a slower, thoughtful site-by-site assessment is what's appropriate here. Given the impact of the, sort of, the market is hot, as everyone is talking about, and the sites in the sub-area are quite large, and that makes it a little bit more distinctive than other parts of downtown. And so, while, yes, I would acknowledge that the increment is much higher, we have added, increased the zoning standards in other parts of the city, but we tended to do it on a much larger scale physically, and to me, we need to moderate here and take it a lot more, sort of incremental steps, as you will, so that we can make sure that we are responding on a site-by-site basis to the needs of the community. And in this case, as I mentioned, this is a park-deficient area, so that's where we started with this applicant. So I would just give that perspective, knowing...
Right, completely. Because we aren't going to get a lot of parks and features like this in other places of downtown that's already built out.
No.
Or somewhere where they're doing adaptive reuse of what's already built into the landscape. But, if we were talking about incremental change, I am concerned that this is not incremental change, this is a big change. And so while I was sitting over here and wrote down very lovely notes, like, I love this park, then when, that's why I wanted to go back, because I think I got blindsided by, to use the neighbor's words, the sex and the sizzle of it, and that's why I wanted this clarification of where it is in these sub-districts, because my concern is, is the precedent. If we do jump up this high, somebody else puts in a lovely... If we do jump up this high, somebody else puts in a lovely park, and then at this, and somebody else fits in a lovely park, then we are, we have changed the height for this entire sub-district and we're throwing out what we've had. Um, and I am concerned, this is a, this is just such a drastic departure from that. That's why I wanted the clarification of where it was. And I get it, it is super close to the unlimited bonus area, but it's not there. It's not in the unlimited bonus area. So I want to hear what everybody else has to say. I love the, the, the other checkmarks of the design and of the park. Just, it's a lot of bonus.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you. I appreciate the comment from fellow commissioners. I mean, looking at this picture side-by-side, previous version and the current version, I totally get it, you know, neighbors, oh my goodness, you know, this height. But, you know, uh, hearing from a district council member, I can see lots of community improvement. And I think in this case, yes, I do appreciate our director's uh, explanation. You know, we could entirely take a look at the sub-district and then let's re- vi- visit the height. But if we revisit height, we get to see this previous version, which nobody likes. I mean, you know, it's not good design, but if we do this approach, like similar, you know, a BZ approach, just to look at site-specific and look at every single element. And then we do have authority or capability to weigh if this appropriate of this specific height, uh, place. So in that uh, perspective, I do understand, you know, existing neighbor don't wanna change the view. But I think, I'm not architect, but the thought process of this building is excellent. Because the, because of the shape, it will give more airspace. It will give more, you know, light space. And then, you know, the specifically, I like privately owned and maintained public park. That has great potential for existing neighbors. And when this is built and done, it will be a great opportunity for not only park, but like a farmer's market, which, you know, this neighborhood desperately need. So all of this, I think this meet criteria of a unique architect, you know, exceptional, you know, strong streetscape, and improved surrounding neighbors. I mean, from the previous version to current version, of course, you know, it's hard to see the change, but it's a great change. Not, you know, we, previously, we denied the added density where it's not appropriate. But to me, it's an appropriate area for the density. And if this plan is hotel and semi-hotel, like, you know, short-term rental, I will be hesitant. But the condition is no short-term rental. So affordable housing, we cannot force it, but at least we can assure there will be added housing. So overall, it is great. So, so one thing I think applicant neglect to mention, or our time was up, is my favorite, they are aiming to uh, platinum lead certificate. And I think this building has potential to reach to platinum lead certification. So, you know, counting those, I think this meets our criteria and I am very favorable of it.
Thank you. Commissioner Haynes?
So, uh, staff, real quickly, number of bedrooms in the total project? I know we have number of units. Do we have number of bedrooms?
Commissioner, uh, can you hold on a second? I can grab my report. The applicant may have that information more readily available.
So, um, I don't think the parking works. I don't think enough parking space is here. Um, number two, I agree with Council Lady Murphy. I, I think the, the bonus height, while the architecture is fabulous, I think unless we pause on our bonus heights, our infrastructure as a city is not gonna keep up in the core of our downtown. And if we do this project and then we continue down the Lafayette District, uh, we're gonna create an infrastructure problem. And I think as a city, especially in the core of our downtown, we've got to pause on triple the, the density and the bonus heights. Um, so at this point in time, and, and as the planning commissioner assigned to parks, I think the green space is great. But from a parks perspective, just to keep y'all in the, in the loop, we're working on Wharf Park, we're working on Fort Negley Park, we're working on the East Bank, we've got a St. Amphitheater. We have parks in the immediate area. And then lastly, I think as we go through the Lafayette District, I encourage all of y'all to go to Fort Negley and look back towards Second and Peabody. We've got this treasured asset that we've decided to preserve and maintain in Fort Negley. And as, if we keep permeating the district with height, Fort Negley's V shed's gonna go away. So I ask y'all to think about that.
Thank you. Commissioner Haynes?
Uh, well, I think there's a, a lot of comments that I would, I would echo. I'll try to minimize doing that this time. But there were a couple of things that I, I took note of, um, as, as folks were speaking. Um, I mean, I'll, I'll come out right, I, I mean, I've, I've been a proponent of incremental and case-by-case density since I've been appointed to the planning commission. And I do, I think, um, some of the comments by, uh, by director are accurate. I do think identifying areas that are at the transition points of, um, of our communities and really thinking of them as ways to tie the community together, ways to weave in, um, the growth that we're gonna inevitably have to accommodate as, as a city is extremely important. Um, I do think, and I, and I definitely understand why there is some discomfort with the scale here. Um, but again, I think looking at this area for the future, I mean, I, I can only imagine what'll happen in five years, in six years. I mean, I have the benefit of being a Nashville native and there's areas that I never would've thought would've been as tall as they are now. Um, and so I, I think about how the city's growing and how it'll hit a version of hyperdrive that we think we are experiencing now. It's gonna keep coming. And to me, the best way to, to preserve and get the things we want are to put them in place now with the thoughtfulness for the future. I think a lot of that's accounted for here because of the amount of, um, amount of open space. I'd also think, you know, my fellow commissioner makes a good point about parking. I, I, Nashville's gotta start understanding that I think we're gonna have to reassess how we look at our parking and our transit. I think there's an opportunity here to say, you know, what, what does this do for how people navigate and move around downtown? Um, I think it's a, it's a conversation starter for what Nashville can look at for the future. Um, beautiful design. I do have a couple of comments that I'm not sure how they can be addressed, but I think, you know, the, the amenities and the atmosphere that we're presented are great. Um, I think my fellow commissioner, Commissioner Tibbs mentioned a wind study. I think it would be awful that if this moves forward, that people really can't enjoy that space. I mean, making a promise of what that space can be, but if people can't enjoy it because of the conditions of the space, I think that's, that's extremely unfortunate. And I know that from a feasibility standpoint, you know, you grant a height bonus, the height comes, and then as the plan evolves, it slowly erodes away on what could be in the landscaping. So I don't know if there's any type of conditions that can hold that, um, can hold, um, the developer to that. Because I think as it, as it evolves, I think it's gonna be important that if we as a commissioner looking at this for our recommendation, those are things that, um, really hold a lot of value, I think, myself as well as others that have spoken. Um, but I, I do think, um, you know, we've had approval from MDHA in terms of concept. We've had the downtown partnership support. Um, I do want to ask a, a quick question. The original plan had about six thousand square feet of landscape space. Um, what, is, is that meet a requirement? Is there a requirement? What, what would've been required if they were to just, per no bonus height, nothing, just build to the maximum capacity? What would've been the required?
So Commissioner, there is no requirement in that case. The ISR for downtown is generally speaking, one hundred percent. Obviously, there are stormwater quality things that come along with this. Um, as long as they're following the low, uh, impact development stormor, uh, manual, uh, it's generally acceptable. So they, to answer your question, yes, they could build the entire thing.
So Eric, just to be plain about it, they could've covered the site completely. And I asked initially, how many units could you accomplish under the existing zoning versus what is being proposed? It's not that different under the current scheme. And so I think the question isn't really about density. It's about the type of environment, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and so, and the, and I'm getting to my point. I think the, the thing to think about here as a community, outside of those who are having their views impacted, and I definitely understand that as a, as a reason for selecting the area you're in, they're giving seven times the amount of green space, open space, and activating it and amenitizing it. So we're talking about three times, um, the height bonus, but you're trading three times the airspace for seven times of the active usable space for people that live in Nashville and will continue to live here. To me, that's, that's the, that's the definition of ex- exceptional design and doing it in a way that benefits a larger community. Um, I just, I'll let others continue to speak, but I just want to make that known and make that statement, um, for fellow commissioners and those who are here.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sims?
Um, I'm coming at it as usually a different way than some of my colleagues, but, um, this conversation is going to happen sooner rather than later. And when, I had the, I had the opportunity to work with both Guangzhou and China and Singapore as they started trying to figure out all this density stuff several years ago. And one of the things that bothers me and has come to be really a fact about these kind of really high residential units is how much do we really help create and sustain vertical neighborhoods? And what's what we're talking about is we've been used to horizontal neighborhoods and what they want, but I think the park is one way we can bring people in. But my, my question is, what are we doing as we create these forty stories in terms of sustaining neighborhoods that are now growing vertical and not just horizontally? And I think until we can really answer that question well, we don't have any business putting that many people. One of the things that we know from the American Psychological Association is that you get above five floors, there is a, there's actually a measurable way of seeing if people are actually engaged in their communities or not. And we're getting way over five stories right now. So how do we begin to have the conversations? For me, it's less, I don't care if you're a hundred stories, if you're doing a good job of actually creating vertical neighborhoods. And it's just a different way for us to think about it. Of course, Jeff and I disagree on almost everything. But in this case, I have serious questions about, okay, a park is a good way to engage the neighborhoods, but what are we doing? And what other cities did was actually create, like every seventh floor had internal parks. They had libraries. They had all kinds of stuff going on in there to sustain the, the well-being of our citizens.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chair?
Well done. That was confusing order. Um, that was a very interesting comment, Commissioner Sims. I had never really thought about the vertical neighborhood integration. Um, I, just for one point, this, the bonus height only goes with this project, right? So if this project did not go forward, this is not tied to the property?
The height modification, sorry, that's okay. The height modification is associated with-
This specific project.
Specific project, yes. It will be design speci- if approved by the commission, it will be very specific to the design and all of the elements that we've been talking about here.
So, okay, so if something happened, the project didn't go forward, then it would be back to square one?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. That, that makes me feel, um, you know, I think what Commissioner Johnson said really resonated with me that, um, if we don't take the steps to kind of deal with this on a step-by-step basis, we end up with that design that fills the, that's big giant block, which we know we don't want. Um, I know that we do tend to think about things and we, we don't like to deal with things parcel by parcel or multiple parcel by parcel. Um, but I think in this case, that really is the best way to go because we want to be sensitive to how we blend these two distinct areas. Um, it is a lot. I mean, I agree. I think the, the tripling from what, you know, what's allowed now seems like a lot. However, your point, Director, that, um, you know, if we looked at this again, we probably would do it differently, or we would recommend something differently, and then we end up with this block. Um, to me, makes it, you know, that potential out, outweighs my concerns, um, about the current. I think it's an amazing project. I love to see some new architecture. I think we need new architecture and design in downtown Nashville. Um, so this project is really exciting. So I know it's a lot, um, but I support staff's recommendation and I will make a motion if you want, or?
Yeah, I think, uh, you're the last to speak, so it's time to make a motion.
Anybody else? But I'll make a motion that we approve staff's recommendation.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second? And it's second by Commissioner Tibbs. Any discussion? Oh, Council Lady, I'm sorry. I didn't see you. I was-
Thank you. That's okay.
Uh, we go, I go slow. Council Lady recognized?
Um, I guess, I, I understand that there's a motion on the table. I, I guess I would feel more comfortable if there was a motion to defer this one meeting just to see if they can, where they could end up with the heights.
Unfortunately, uh, that's not a proper motion at this time. We're on discussion-
I'm, I'm saying, I'm, I'm asking if, if the, if Vice Chair Farr would be willing to, if we could just defer this one meeting rather than a straight approval, just to see if they can maintain the architecture, the streetscape and all of that, but maybe not be triple what other property owners around them would be allowed to do.
Well, Council Lady, generally, there would have to be like a material change or something of that nature to change a motion, but I will leave it up to the Vice Chair.
I just wanted to throw that out for consideration as, uh, you know, on top of her motion, I guess.
Vice Chair, you have, you have to, yeah.
I, I don't know the, I mean, I'm happy to have a discussion about our options and I will retract my motion if we need to have another, a little more discussion. But I don't know that we, I guess we discussed deferral, uh, as an open discussion item.
I, I just need a little clarification on what we're, what are we looking at? I mean, are we asking, what, what specifically would we be asking the applicant to consider?
I guess because typically I'm on the, uh, the council member's side of these conversations. And so usually I'm like, well, can you take it down three more stories? Can you take it down five more stories? Where are your max numbers? At what number do you come down that we lose the park? At how high do you have to go to get the park? And that's really what, that I don't feel has been presented to us tonight. It has just been presented as a great plan. Um, again, I like the architecture. I like the park. I just, I'm, I'm really uneasy with the height. And I would like to, and, and maybe if they hadn't run out of time, we would've gotten to that presentation part of how they arrived at this number of floors that it had to be, and why is that beneficial? Why is that height beneficial other than the, the bonus height? Because again, this is a lot taller than eleven, and I think I just feel more comfortable with more of that information presented to us before making a straight approval.
Well, I mean, so that's a question for the developer, and I'm sure that they can have a response. And Vice Chair, is that okay to clarify?
Do you want me to withdraw my motion and so we can have discussion?
Not yet. Not yet. I think we're still in discussion and it's, it's allowable right now to ask, Commissioner, as the Council Lady as a commissioner, can ask that question of the developer. But is there an objection by the-
Back up, I want to speak to you. By the way, in case, you know, motion defer takes precedence over the main motion. It just needs a second, just so you know.
Well-
Did y'all know that? She didn't know. It's all the truth. It's a little book.
Well, let's ask our attorney.
Uh, I believe that the, um, that she was requesting whether or not the commissioner would modify the motion. And so that was the, that was the request. That's how I interpreted it.
Yeah, we're in discussion of the original motion. So under, unfortunately, a motion to defer, the first motion has to be finished.
Motion to defer takes precedence over the main motion. Everything takes precedence over the main motion.
Okay.
Actually, the-
No, no, sir, I'm sorry, but the, unfortunately, you're not a commissioner. Okay. Alex, would you like to answer the question on-
Well, technically, the commissioner actually withdrew her motion, so we're back at a, an original place, so.
What the Vice Chair did?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's, that's what I heard, so, um, but we could, you could do it however you wish with respect to your motion.
So Vice Chair, uh, the question is, have you, uh, procedurally, here is where we-
I was seeking advice as to whether I should withdraw my motion so that we should have additional discussion.
Yes, that is what I understood as well, not that she withdrew-
And I think my discussion, my comments were a discussion of her motion of whether, and I stumbled through it, of whether that would be a better idea than the motion on the table. So I didn't make a proper motion. I was trying to discuss whether her motion-
Yes, so we're on the discussion. And, and so there's been a question asked, and the question is, question is, generally, when we defer an item, there is a reason or a material change, and that's been a tradition of this body for a long time, and that's generally what we have done, right, Director?
That's correct. That's correct. And typically, if we're discussing a deferral, we will ask the applicant to respond if we're still in a discussion period.
Yeah, so it's a proper question. Why did you arrive at this height, and can you reduce it? I guess, is that the question, Council Lady?
Yes, I mean, I fully expect with a motion for approval on the table for them to say no. I get that. I guess mine was more of an internal discussion of us, of whether we think that given more information about the height would give us a better idea. And I doubt that they're ready to present that tonight, and they don't have time to.
And just for opposing counsel, it's not required that you have a statement after we ask a question. If a commissioner wants to ask you a question, then that's appropriate.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. So the developer is allowed to answer the question?
I didn't want to object for the record that you're not following Robert Schulz's order, but you all can live...
That's fine. Well, stated in the microphone, so you're crystal clear.
As an procedural objection, you're not following Robert Schulz's rules of order. Councilwoman Murphy's motion was proper. Motion to defer takes precedence...
She just said she didn't ask for a motion.
That's what she, well, the record will reflect. That's the motion she made, with a second, it would take precedence over the main motion.
Councillor, thank you.
Just so you know.
Thank you.
The council might know that.
All right. So is the developer ready to answer the question?
For the record, my name is Dean Strutoli. I live in Boston, although I think I'm going to turn the Joseph Hotel into my current residence. Two questions that you asked. One was height, and can you make it shorter? First, understand that staff has beat on us to create something significant here, and that with all due respect to Commissioner Haynes, we're not increasing the density of the project. We can put 900,000 square feet on this site as an early Soviet block architectural scheme, which I don't want to do. I've said that to my butters, my neighbors. The last thing I want is another Texas rap sitting in the middle of downtown Nashville. If that's what the council wants, you know, we could do it, or someone else can do it. We tried to create a significant public park, 60,000 square feet. To do that, we take the buildings, and as John, the architect articulated, we pull them back, and we have now very thin floor plates, and we have a very unique architecture, which gives us a fairly efficient floor plate. But to get the same area, we have to go up. We tried to crenulate the buildings in different heights so that there was some diversity, you know. We didn't want to make twin towers here, so we pushed one up, one down. So we could bring the towers down, maybe five, six, seven floors, but you're not going to have the same shape. You're not going to have the same ground floor. You're not going to have the same park. You're not going to have, you know, I call it our mini Niagara Falls. So there's a lot that has gone into this for the last year, and...
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
So we're back. Council Lady, does that answer your question?
It was the answer I expected them to give tonight.
Okay, I figured that. So we're back to the Vice Chair. Would you like to withdraw your motion, and then we can try to consider a deferral?
We're going to go with the motion.
Okay. Commissioner Sims?
The question I was trying to bring up with the creating really, really, they're trying to create a model for our city. The vertical neighborhood is something that other countries take very seriously. They actually have designs for. And in this case, I'm wondering how, okay.
Commissioner Sims, you can ask the developer. Come on up again, and this is appropriate. We've done this several times. Over the last 10 years as a commission, we ask the developer questions when commissioners have questions.
So we have two constituency groups, and you articulated it exactly right. We have the neighborhood, which we have, I think, tried to create a great place, a great sense of place and a destination. Then we have our tenants and our residents. And as we do at the Four Seasons, we amenitize, excuse the expression, the hell out of these buildings. There are, you don't see it, the rooftops are complete amenity packages, including swimming pools. As you go down in the building, there are gymnasiums, there are these display kitchens, there are game rooms, there are golf simulators, there are, which I need, and TV lounges. So we do create those opportunities to create some cohesiveness in the building, where people want to meet, especially on top of the roof. So we're very cognizant of that, and if you don't do that, then people, and it's proven, they won't live there. They move. And the worst thing for an apartment building is to have people turning over all the time. You can't afford it. So we do everything we can to create a sense of place with that park, create a sense of place within the building, so that people have a place that they, that they live and can enjoy, and they have the full amenities that they don't have to join the health club. They don't have to go to a movie. It's all there, and they can interact with all of their neighbors. Some play golf, some play ping pong, some play pool, but all of those features are in these buildings.
Thank you, because I think we're creating, we're creating more neighborhoods. We're just going a different direction with them, and we are struggling now with our own neighborhoods, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Sims. So we, procedurally, we are, there was a proper motion, a proper second. No deferral motion. It was a question. We are on discussion of the motion to approve. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. Six eyes. All those that say no, raise your hand. Two, six to two, and it's approved. Thank you. So now we're back on schedule. We have items 11, 12, 16, and 21. And so if everybody could, we're still in session, so if you could quickly take all the conversations out the door, that way we can continue our business. It's going to be a long night, or else we might make you stay the rest of the night with us. So thank you, everybody, for coming in. All right. Abby, are you ready to do item 11? If, let's just give everybody just a second to get out the door, and if the team, if the staff team could make sure they get out the door, that'd be great. All right. All right. So here we are. Item number 11.
All right. Item number 11 is case 2021 SP...
Abby, wait, before you get started, let's just make sure, to make sure that the person, and we do this traditionally too, who is here to oppose item 11? Okay, thank you. So we'll go ahead and go. All right. Go ahead, Abby.
This item is case 2021 SP dash 036 dash 001, the Lebanon Place SP. This is a request to rezone from Commercial Service and One and Two Family Residential R10 to a specific planned zoning for properties located on Lebanon Pike, east of Donaldson Pike, and located within the downtown Donaldson urban design overlay to permit 108 multifamily residential units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. The site is 8.3 acres, and it's located on the north side of Lebanon Pike, northwest of the intersection of Lebanon Pike and Stewart's Ferry Pike. Stewart's Ferry Pike terminates into Mun Road to the east. The site contains heavy vegetation and contains a stream and stream buffer that bisects the western portion of the site, and there are also areas of heavy tree canopy and steeper slopes on either side of the stream. I also want to point out that the site is adjacent to a church located to the Here is a bird's eye view of the site, and again, the site is outlined in red. The church that's adjacent is to the east, and then there's also an SP located at the corner of Mun Road and Lebanon Pike that was approved on the consent agenda earlier tonight, and that SP includes 68 multifamily residential units. So that SP is located over here. The eastern portion of the site is zoned R10 and is developed with residential uses. The western portion is zoned Commercial Service and is primarily vacant. Surrounding land uses include a church to the east, and then commercial and non-residential uses to the west and on the south side of Lebanon Pike. The plan proposes 108 multifamily residential units housed in five buildings. Building one is the largest of the buildings and is located at the front of the site on the western side of the drive. Building two is a smaller building on the eastern side of the drive, and then Buildings three, four, and five are located to the rear and are oriented towards the eastern boundary. The access drive leads to an interior surface, sorry, it leads to interior surface parking areas and to the lower level garages provided at the rear of the two front buildings. Pedestrian access is provided directly from Lebanon Pike, and then there's also interior pedestrian access along the internal driveway, and then a pedestrian path is also provided behind the development footprint back here, wrapping the property and then stubbing to the eastern boundary for future connectivity. The buildings are proposed with maximum heights of three to four stories, and conceptual architectural elevations with architectural standards have been included in the plan. Open space is primarily provided to the north behind the development footprint, where majority of the tree canopy is indicated to be preserved. This is an overall site plan. So now the subject site is on the left, within the red boundary. The church that is adjacent is still, is highlighted in a light green color, and then the associated SP at the corner of Mun Road and Lebanon Pike is located on the right side. Vehicular and pedestrian access are proposed to be coordinated between the subject site, the church property, and the associated SP at the corner of Mun and Lebanon. So the black dashed line indicates vehicular access, which there's a connection coming off of Lebanon down here into the subject site, and then it continues to the east and then connects to Mun Road to the east. There's also the pedestrian path that I mentioned previously. It is proposed to continue to the east behind the church property and then behind the associated SP continuing out to Mun Road as well. The policy, the site includes a couple of different policies. The T4 Community Center policy, which is located in purple, the T3 Residential Corridor policy in the yellow color, and then Conservation Policy to the back. The majority of the site is within the T4, sorry, T3 Residential Corridor policy, which is intended to enhance suburban arterial boulevards with residential development that frames a corridor within the sub-district four of the downtown Donaldson UDO. The site is also located within a Tier One center along a priority corridor, which is Lebanon Pike, which is identified by the Nashville NEX Growth and Preservation Map. Centers are intended to be the focus of coordinated growth, where additional intensity, such as multifamily development, is expected to support existing and future transit service. A majority of the proposed development is located outside of the sensitive features recognized by the Conservation Policy. The Conservation Policy on this slide is shaded in gray. Small portions of the development, including Building one and then a small area of Building five, are located within areas of steep slopes, so within that Conservation Policy area. Policy guidance for conservation areas surrounded by tiered centers, such as the site, recommends that environmentally sensitive development techniques be employed to limit disturbance, but that the balance tips more towards the function than the development pattern of the surrounding tiered center than towards the preservation or remediation of the sensitive features. Vehicular and pedestrian access are proposed to be coordinated between the site, the church property, and the associated SP to the east, to provide for enhanced access management, which is a goal of a Tier One center. And the plan proposes residential development at a level of intensity expected along a major corridor. Therefore, staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions.
Thank you. So we'll open this item for public hearing, and is the applicant in the room? Come on up. You have 10 minutes, and you can save two of the 10 minutes for rebuttal. Please state your name and address.
My name's Lynn Ely. I'm with Land Solutions Company, and I won't take 10 minutes. I just wanted to, first off, remind everybody that this was a cohesive plan. We've been working with the church for quite a while to create a cohesive plan between item, what was approved earlier is Item 10, what we call the Bowen House, that is to the east of the church, and this project, to where we have connectivity through both projects and through the church to give proper access and pedestrian, pedestrian ways and so forth. So with that, I just want to say that we appreciate the time that staff has given us over the past year and a half to work through a lot of the questions and concerns that were associated with that and other aspects of the project, and we appreciate the church working with us as long as they have, and of course, the property owners that are, that are selling us the property. It's been, as I said, about a year and a half to get everything worked out. We feel like we do have everything worked out, and we're happy with all the conditions that the staff has set forth to recommend approval of the projects. So I will just defer and answer any questions if there are any for my...
Thank you, and if you'll wipe the...
Sure.
...place off. I appreciate it.
Is that what everybody's been doing?
Yeah, and the table, yeah, that's, thank you, sorry. It's...
Thank you.
And so, just procedurally, councilman, what we'll do is we'll get through all of the public hearing, and then you'll speak last traditionally, as I want to make sure you guys have plenty of time to speak. So anyone wishing to speak, and so you have two minutes for rebuttal reserved. Anyone wishing to speak in support of the project? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? So ma'am, now is your time. Come on up. Timer's right there. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Christine Clark, and I own the property that abuts this project, 431 Mun Road, which would be north of this, these two parcels. And I am opposing this project just for lack of knowledge, and I had requested several times from Land Solutions a copy of the plan. It kept getting changed and whatnot. My concern is traffic. Now we're looking, we're taking something that was zoned, you know, R10, to, would have housed 17 parcels lots. Now we're looking at 108 units with approximately, just say 160 more cars added to Lebanon Road, which is already a complete mess. I kind of want assurance with, you know, my property being right there. The egress, the ingress, what are they going to do about traffic? There's not a light there with that many, that much traffic on Lebanon Road. How are they going to enter and exit with that density, not, also including the new property at 68 units at the corner of Mun Road and Lebanon Pike? So that is definitely a concern. Construction entrances and whatnot. Are these rentals? Are these going to be for sale? Are these condos? What's that going to do to my property value? So those are some of the questions that I would have for the developer. Again, you know, once there's lack of knowledge, and I, at this time, I'd like to oppose based on, you know, not knowing enough about the project and what's going to, how they're going to handle the traffic and the amount of, you know, the density and whatnot with the added traffic to Lebanon Pike.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you coming down. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, rebuttal, and then the councilman. Rebuttal, two minutes, and then the councilman.
Don't have much more to add than what I said earlier about the vehicular access that we've, we've worked out with staff and, and we feel like we've, we've adequately addressed the concerns, the traffic concerns in the area. Beyond that, I'm happy to get with, with the neighbor and after this meeting and work out any other fine details.
I think that would be great if you could speak with her afterwards.
Sure.
Councilman, you ready? After we do another wipe down. Welcome, councilman.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, appreciate it. Property owners are here and, gosh, I've been working with them, I think, all six years that I've been in council about this property here. And so the reason why Items 10 and 11 are tracking together is very much because this is a cohesive development. It is all-for-sale product. There's going to be a deed restriction that the developer has agreed to do to make sure that they are going to be all-for-sale product. High-quality development within walking distance to Donaldson Station, the Transit Center. So it was done very thoughtfully and taken a lot of time. Ms. Clark owns the property north of, she's contacted me on a number of occasions. She wants access to her property that is way down the hill off of Mun Road that she doesn't have any access to now. So she's got, she's had a beef with me for a while, so I think that's why she's here opposing this. But I would appreciate your, your support for this. It's been a long time coming and we've been very thoughtful and taking very incremental thoughtful steps with the community, community meetings. And it's going to be a great addition to downtown Donaldson. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed and Commissioner Haynes, you want to go first? You haven't gone first yet.
No comments. I support staff's recommendation.
All right. Commissioner Haynes?
Likewise, I would, I would ask one question, though. Was there a traffic study requested or required? And if so, was it shared publicly?
A traffic study was required. This development is going to result in more than seventy-five units, which is the threshold. And it was reviewed by Traffic and Dot. I think we have a member of Traffic here, if he's still here.
He's still here?
So he can maybe speak to that. They did in public, Nashville Department of Transportation did include conditions in the staff report. So they will be checking for those with the final SP.
Yeah, my, my question was just, was one done and was it made available? And that, that may have been more directed towards the council member or towards the applicant. Just wanted to be sure that was available information. I see nods, so that, that was my only question.
Yeah, anything that's submitted as part of a file is available if requested, of course.
Commissioner Sims.
I just want to thank the staff. I know when it's really easy for us, it's been really hard for y'all. So thank you very much for the work you did. And I agree with the staff report.
Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you. I understand, you know, neighbors' point of view because traffic comes in, it's very hard. I mean, you know, nobody want to stuck in the traffic. But at the same time, I really glad to hear from Councilman Syracuse, you know, train station is walking distance. So we are underfunded, so train is not come as much as we want. But, you know, sometimes we have to kind of, as policy-wise, you know, put the density where it's appropriate, especially this is a tier-one, you know, policy. So I think policy-wise, adding density and this type of development, especially preserving, you know, sensitive area kind of makes sense. So I'm supportive of staff recommendation.
Counselor.
I just had a quick question about the staff report. The one, the like, the sister SP to this one, it's not called a trail-oriented development, but this one is. What's the difference between the two? Is it because this one has a bigger trail on it?
So I'm not sure, but there's two different sub-districts. There's a couple of different sub-districts in the UDO. This one has, is within two sub-districts. One of them is the TOD sub-district, but the majority of this site is within sub-district four. So the portion that's in the TOD is pretty much the area that has the stormwater features up front and then the rest of it is in sub-district four. And then the sister SP is also in sub-district four. So they're all in the same sub-district, which calls for like residential and civic density along the corridor.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't know if the different length is what determined which one it was, which, which category. So, sounds good?
Commissioner Tibbs.
I also agree with the staff recommendation. I, I would say, though, maybe the, as the developer recommended, maybe you could discuss with the, the neighbor and address her issue. It seems like she just had some questions that she wanted answered. So maybe that way you could get it, you know, get her answers, answers, the questions answered, so.
Vice Chair.
I will make a motion that we approve staff's recommendation.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second? Second? Any discussion? Let's try a voice vote. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no? Ayes have it. It's adopted. Now we are on to item number twelve.
Good evening, commissioners. My name's Logan Elliott. I'll be presenting item twelve tonight. The request is to rezone from R-six and CS to SP zoning to permit a mixed-use development. Staff's recommendation is to disapprove.
Ma'am, we're still in the middle of the meeting. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, I know. Thank you. I just, we can't hear the other speaker. Thank you.
The subject site is approximately 1.12 acres and comprises both southern corner properties at the intersection of Ninth Avenue North and Clay Street. The site is zoned commercial service in R-six. A commercial pud exists at the eastern corner parcel and this pud was approved in 2003 to permit an existing restaurant, an exception from the minimum distance requirements included in the pud provisions of the Metro Code. And the surrounding area is R-six zoning. The application proposes a specific plan that includes two mixed-use buildings. Building one, being on the west side of Ninth Avenue North, contains a maximum of nineteen-hundred-and-twenty-one square feet of retail and a maximum of thirty-two multifamily units. Building two, being on the east side of Ninth Avenue North, contains a maximum of twenty-five-hundred-and-thirty-nine square feet of retail and a maximum of thirty-one multifamily units. In total, the application proposes sixty-three multifamily units and forty-four-hundred-and-sixty square feet of retail. Both buildings have surface parking to the rear that has access via the alleyways that the application proposes to improve to metro standards. The application includes, includes a landscape buffer along the southern property boundary on both the east and western site. The application includes a WeGo bus stop that is proposed on the southern side of Clay Street being west of Ninth Avenue North. And the application proposes to improve the pedestrian crossings at all four points at the intersection of the streets here. The policy for this area is urban neighborhood maintenance. This policy intends to maintain the general character of the existing residential neighborhood. The site is internal to the neighborhood maintenance area with the closest commercial policy area being on Buchanan Street with the next closest being on Rosa Parks Boulevard. The district major institutional policy in the larger site to the east contains the institution of the Dominican Sisters of Saint Cecilia. Staff is recommending disapproval of this application because the application proposes land uses that are not supported by the neighborhood maintenance policy. The T-four neighborhood maintenance policy is a residential policy that supports residential and institutional land uses and does not support commercial land uses such as retail. In addition to the land use issues, the density and form of the development that is proposed is not aligned with the goals of the neighborhood maintenance policy. The surrounding land uses are primarily single and two-family residential with the proposed density being close to sixty units per acre, which is significantly higher than the surrounding densities and represents a dramatic departure from the built character of the existing neighborhood. The proposed plan would require a policy amendment to a policy that, one, permitted non-residential land uses and, two, permitted a building of this form and scale. And this policy amendment would be a major amendment that required at least one community meeting. For these reasons, staff is recommending disapproval of the application and that completes my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll open this item for public hearing. Is the applicant in the room? So you have ten minutes and can save two of the ten minutes for rebuttal. State your name and address. Thank you.
Jay Fulmer, 2002, Richard Jones Road, Nashville, Tennessee. One thing that I, we came before y'all with a basery zone about a year ago. This project is a two-phase project with the, the western side zone, CS. It's actually under construction right now. The east side, the bottom third of the property is what's zoned R-six. The intersection has four, four CS zoning parcels. The northwest corner is slated to be an office building that's three stories. There was confusion during the review that I admittedly didn't catch in the staff report. The, the project's actually three stories. It's not four. Doesn't matter. It would still be recommended for disapproval. And that's all based on the underlying policy. And so Brandon Taylor spoke earlier about how he didn't want to go through a policy change for this intersection. And, and we support him in that. But what we have is an expansion on the eastern side that allows what could be built under CS on both of those parcels underneath the adapted residential. So a year ago, there was a lot of hesitation that with the basery zone, y'all didn't have a plan. And Councilman Taylor had a few other requests, just such as intersection improvements. We extended a sidewalk down to Tenth next to the church to connect to that intersection. We added the bus stop on the southern side of Clay Street. And then he wanted to make sure that we were addressing the landscape buffer on the southern side of that parcel really well. So we've included all of those. And, you know, we feel like we've, we've done a good job working with the neighborhood, had a really positive neighborhood meeting. And nobody's here in support. And I know as of this morning, there was no letters of opposition. But we're in the terrible place of being against the recommendation of planning staff, which I completely understand and support, given the underlying policy. But this intersection is already functioning as a commercial intersection. So I, I hope that, you know, with the limitation to the three stories, that it's a little more fitting in a transition. It's not just a four-story pop-up in the one- or two-family street. And we urge you to consider all the merits of it and, and hope you can support it, you know, even though there is a recommendation of disapproval.
Thank you. And we'll reserve two minutes for rebuttal.
I wanted to just highlight, the parcel that's R-six is the southern third of the southeast quadrant. This is currently a, a small residential house. I'm not sure if it's in use right now or not. The backyard's got some work going on, but it doesn't look like anybody's living in it. This is going to be a three-story office building. It's actually going to be a, it's in design right now. It's going to be a shipping container office building. It's kind of an interesting idea. And this is the parcel under construction. And the other thing that should be noted is this house that was existing was condemned. So it was, it, it's been demolished. And, and the corner property was a, was previously a bar. And that's why there was a pud. A pud was established over that parcel to allow the restaurant in there to sell beer. I don't, I think it's debatable if it was a restaurant. It's a windowless brick structure that the councilman is happy to see go. So.
Thank you, sir. We'll reserve two minutes for rebuttal. Anyone here wishing to speak in support? Seeing none? Anyone here wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none? We're back on rebuttal, but the councilman's not here. He already spoke. Is there anything else you want to add? Are you good?
I can only beg.
No, we're good. So, we're good. We're good. All right. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner Haynes, you want to go first?
Happy to. I'm, I'm quite familiar with the area, actually quite familiar with the parcel. You know, this, I'm, I'm probably the, this is probably the wrong time to have me as commissioner because I'm like, this makes absolute sense to me and I'm sorry you have to be in that spot because of policy. I've been in the same place a few times. Yeah, I'll, I'll pass to others, but I, this is something I really wish we had a better solution for.
Commissioner Sims.
I agree with Mr. Haynes a lot. I mean, I went by and looked at this and actually thought, you know, this is, this is bad that we just don't have a better way of helping to do this because I think you're on to something. But currently, under our policies, we can't do it. And so, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you. I'm on the same boat. I think, you know, if this was different policy, you know, start with a policy change to introduce that, you know, kind of a development, especially if it were supported by neighborhood, that would be a great plan. But unfortunately, it is not the policy. So, you know, as a body, to follow the policy, we cannot, you know, bend, sway from that. So I will follow staff recommendation on this case.
Counselor.
And so the reason there wasn't a policy change is because the councilman didn't want to go there because it would be too broad? Is there not an option to do like a small policy, like area change? Like, I know we do small studies. I don't know if that's really what they're called.
Sorry, the staff member is.
We can certainly, I mean, we can do policy amendments. I mean, we've done parcel-specific policy amendments and so it wouldn't necessarily have to be a, a super large area. I haven't spoken directly with the council member related to his concerns around a policy amendment.
Okay. I guess that was my question because rather than disapprove this and send it to council, where council will override it, that will be, I will be making a comment about that in my legislative report. I guess my concern is I would rather just, it seems, this would be an easy thing to fix through doing a small study area or whatever. So I, I, that's what puts us in the, in the tough spot is not having that real answer of why we're not just doing a quick little study and a change here because it does seem to make sense. The staff, oh, the staff, oh, sorry.
Hold on one second. The developer wants to say something. He might have had a conversation with.
We, when we had the basery zoning request, we did talk to the policy side and they said that it wasn't, they didn't seem fitting to create a neighborhood center policy in this. I, I'm thinking back over a year ago and that, and that might be because it supports a lot more intense zoning than what we're proposing. It's just three stories and we all know how overtaxed they are already. And since the other three corners were already zoned CS, well, four corners, they were really just shifting down. What, what we don't want to have to do is trim that, that part of the building off and, and put two houses on there.
Okay. Thank you.
So they, they just, they didn't see a fit, a fitting application for it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess I just, I, I hate when we have incompatible uses with the policy. And so hopefully, you know, when we have the planning department with five hundred staffers, we can go through and find all these little corners and change them because I know that's what you want to do, Lucy. And so with that, I, I, I don't like the staff recommendation because it, I wish the policy made it work.
Commissioner Tibbs.
Don't like staff recommendation?
I don't know. I do. I don't. I don't like the policy. I'll clarify that on the record. I don't like the policy dilemma we're in.
Can I ask the staff? I mean, they may give me angry eyes when I put this on the table, but we're all family here. So haven't there been instances where we've had minor changes after direction from the commission that we've issued some corrections, but the commission needs to affirmatively say, we think that this meets the policy? And so these have been, go ahead. The practice has not happened as much.
On very, very rare occasions, like when, when there's not opposition and, and it makes sense to the commission, I, I, there have been times where you have moved forward and with the rezoning, but directed staff to do a housekeeping amendment at a later date to, to sort of bring that in line with the zoning recommendation.
What would that... What does that timeline look like if y'all were to do this?
I mean, you could... It would be something that could happen after the fact. You could recommend approval of the zone change with a condition that... Or with a recommendation that staff go back and look at the policy for a housekeeping amendment. So it wouldn't pause the zoning.
Okay. Because I guess what I'm saying is I want the policy changed so this is not incompatible and non-conforming or whatever you want to say, but I don't want to affect Councilman Taylor's vote count because it does sound like this is a good direction to move in. So however, y'all figure that out.
All right. Commissioner Tibbs.
I'm pretty boring, I guess, on this. Well, I shouldn't say that. I disagree with... I agree with staff recommendation just because of the policy. If it was different already, I'd say we'd go for it. I agree with, you know, what everybody's saying. It'll be great for the neighborhood, but, you know, it's too far away from what the policy is. So I agree with staff recommendation.
Vice Chair.
I agree. I'm still wrapping my head around it. So the property across the street is under construction with an office building that's within the area that we're looking at for the rezoning?
So let me...
Yeah, so that would be already out of compliance.
Okay. So what we have here is a corner that has four pieces that are all currently zoned CS. So we've got four pieces that are currently zoned CS. Those CS pieces existed prior to the application of the neighborhood maintenance policy. And so in other words, the neighborhood maintenance policy was placed onto zoning that already existed, essentially. And so, yes, under CS, because this property is... Has the majority of its frontage along an arterial or a collector ninth, they're eligible to do several things. They can do residential with no limit to the FAR, so long as they're within the bulk standards. They can do office, retail. So there are a lot of uses that are already permitted, including residential, under the adaptive residential on those properties. Does that make sense?
So is the only issue really the R6 lot, the piece of it that's R6?
That's what's prohibiting the east side being constructed.
So if that little piece probably was zoned CS, I don't... I can't design their plan for them, but it is likely that they could do the proposal that they were looking to do. But I believe that the councilmember asked them to put it all into an SP because he had some other improvements he also wanted to include as part of the development. And so they could likely, if that small piece was zoned commercial, build sort of what they're proposing now. So the zoning pre... The CS zoning predates the policy.
The policy.
Right.
Okay. It seems like there's got to be a technical fix here somehow.
The technical fix, I think, would be to recommend approval with a direction to staff to make a housekeeping amendment to change the policy, to bring it in line with what's proposed today. But I think it would be important for the commission to find that the policy is appropriate at this location, given the context and...
And the policy would be neighborhood center?
I would suggest T4 Neighborhood Center, Urban Neighborhood Center.
I mean, that seems to be exactly what you would want to get in a neighborhood like this, where you want to see... I mean, obviously, it's an area that needs new investment. I mean, this seems like the perfect kind of way to bring what we're trying to achieve in our neighborhoods. So I hate to hold it up for that one R6 property. So I would be comfortable with making a motion like that, but I think we have another commissioner.
Yeah, let's do that. And then I...
I have nothing to add. Go ahead.
So we just need to be careful. You know, when we do these things, you know, we don't want to create precedent for a future. So go ahead, Vice Chair, with a very precise motion for a T4 Neighborhood Center policy change.
I think this is a very unique situation because of the fact that three of the four corners are already zoned CS, including the majority of the parcel they want to build. So I wouldn't... I'm not too terribly worried about a precedent because I doubt you're going to see that many examples like that.
Yeah, actually, it's four corners are CS currently.
Four corners are CS. There's only one little piece that's holding up this... And so I will make a motion that we disapprove staff's recommendation and ask that staff look at doing a policy amendment to update the policy for this small area to T4 Neighborhood Commercial.
A housekeeping amendment.
A housekeeping amendment.
Second.
All right. Proper motion, second. Any other discussion? All in favor of... Well, it would be all in favor of the proposal, say aye.
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 Those opposed, no? One no? Seven ayes?
Good job begging.
It's approved with a housekeeping policy amendment. Okay. Thank you. Very limited circumstance. Okay. All right. Now we're on to item 16, but it was previously on the consent agenda, so let's make sure... Let's see if the... Is anyone here is still here that opposes item 16?
I believe he left.
So let's do this. Anybody here that opposes item 16, please raise your hand. All right. Seeing none, is there a motion to put this back on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Proper motion, proper second. Any discussion?
None.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Item 16 is on the... Back on the consent agenda and is passed. So we are on our last item, which is item 21.
Oh, thank you. It's so new up here. Item 21 is the last item on our agenda. This is for a reserved parcel located in Donaldson. The request is for a final plat approval to remove the reserved parcel status on this property highlighted in red. This property is located at the northwest corner of Bermuda Drive and Dearborn Drive. Staff's recommendation is to disapprove unless the planning commission finds that this parcel fits within the character of the area and is consistent with the general plan. Current zoning is RS10, which is single-family residential. The surrounding zoning is also RS10. On this slide, this is the original plat that was platted in 1954. Please note that the north is now on the left side of your screen, a little bit of a change of orientation. When this plat was approved, this parcel was identified as a reserved parcel. Now, the plat does not identify why this parcel was a reserved parcel. Sometimes it will give us a reason, such as this is a reserved parcel until utilities can get there, but this plat did not have a reason. Therefore, that's why it's in front of you tonight because the planning commission is required to review parcels being converted into building sites. Removing the reserved parcel status will allow this to be a building site for single-family residential. Got a little ahead of myself there. All right. Before you is the one-lot plat. The lot contains areas of floodplain and areas of stormwater regulation buffers. This is the policy on the site, and we just talked about floodplain and stormwater buffers. That's... You're going to see a majority of the site is conservation. The other portion of the site is T3 suburban neighborhood maintenance policy. So when determining whether to remove the reserved parcel status, planning commissions shall consider the following. One, that the parcel fits within to the character of the area and is consistent with the general plan. Two, that it meets all minimum standards of the zoning code. Three, that the parcel has street frontage. And four, that it meets current standards of all agencies. Now, items two, three, and four are met with this parcel. However, staff finds that criteria for item number one is not met when looking at the character of the immediate area. So the existing lots along the block of Bermuda Drive oriented in the same manner all average approximately .94 acres in size. The average frontage is 189 feet. Now, looking at the parcels across the street and along Bermuda to the north, those average sizes are .93 acres with a lot frontage average of 166 feet. This property, this parcel, is .73 acres and has a street frontage of 99 feet. Keep in mind, the planning commission may consider a broader area if they want to. This is just another view of the site, another aerial view. Therefore, staff recommends disapproval unless the planning commission finds that the parcel fits into the character of the area and is consistent with the general plan.
Thank you. And we'll open this item for public hearing, and is the applicant in the... Come on up. Welcome.
Late afternoon to y'all. I am Erica Berkstrom. I'm here to represent... I'm sorry. Donlan Lance Irving and my clients, Mr. David Tasman and Mr. Mark Tasman. We appreciate your time and thank you all for being here so late. The subject parcel we are here to discuss is on Bermuda and Dearborn. It has frontage on both. The current owner's parents were the original owners of the property. They also owned the lot neighboring, which they've owned since 1963. They've farmed this property for many, many years. And back when... I'm sorry. The plat was produced in 1954 before sanitary sewer was provided to this section. And in 1975, sanitary sewer was proposed and also went through this reserved parcel. Upon going through this reserved parcel, Metro produced a tap for this lot. I do have it provided and shown in the slide above. They agreed to let sewer go through so that they would be offered the tap, so that way they would no longer be... They were hoping to no longer be reserved because of septic. They were pretty sure that the lot was reserved because it wouldn't have a septic perking ability and a building lot because of so much water being on the lot. The as-built produced by Metro. I have read that the staff has recommended disapproval unless we consider a broader area, and that's what I'm asking you to do. I'm asking you to consider a broader area in the case and look south past Dearborn Drive and to include the entirety of the original plat, to consider that this lot was created as a part of the original plat and should be included in the character of subdivision. Across the street and south of Dearborn have the same type of road frontages and are common in size. I don't have the numbers in front of me exactly, but if you look at the plat and it's in original form, several of the corner lots, such as this one, have smaller acreages and obviously upon Bermuda would have a smaller road frontage. So we ask you to consider broadening the area and consider this to be a buildable lot.
Thank you. And we'll reserve two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you.
Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Actually remembered.
Come on up. After we wipe down everything. All right. Welcome.
My name is Mark Tasman. I live at 100 Tasman Lane in the metropolis city of Monroe, Tennessee. My parents purchased the adjoining house in 1963. For several years, we had garden... A garden on it with a... In conjunction with another man that lived on Dearborn. He was an old farmer, and he plowed it up for us each year, and we raised vegetables on it, you know, beans and corn and tomatoes. In 1968, my dad purchased the property, and we continued to garden on it. And then I retired from the Navy and moved back home. He had Parkinson's. I took care of him until he died. My mother and I took care of him until he died. And then my mother came down with Alzheimer's. I took care of her until she died in 2019. I took care of the adjoining house and this property. I mowed the yard, mowed this lot, kept it mowed. And now we've sold the house. We're trying to make this a sellable property. We had a offer on it until we found out that it was reserved. Dad had told me that it was reserved because the developer said that the lot was too small to put a septic system on with the creek that ran behind it. And so, you know, we just kept it, and it was kept so that we... Nobody would else build on it and, you know, right next door to us. So we've... I've continued to mow it. Mom and dad are both gone. We want to make it a sellable lot and so I can quit mowing it.
Thank you.
I've moved out of the area, and I don't have a mower in the area, so I have to get somebody else to mow it now, so...
Thank you.
I want to...
We appreciate it.
I want to sell it and move on.
All right. Anyone else wish to speak in support? Come on up.
Yes. My name is Sharon Kipp. I'm a Realtor for the sellers and for Mark Tasman and his brother David, who's in Dallas. They've authorized me to speak for them tonight. The sellers would also like this lot to be a park, but if Councilman Syracuse, and with all due respect to Councilman Syracuse, if he manages to get this application denied so that the neighborhood can buy it on the cheap for a park, you'll need a court order to force the sellers to sell it to the neighborhood. This would be a textbook conflict of interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Councilman?
Should I speak after?
Well, yeah. Well, there's a rebuttal, but we don't... There's nothing else to say, so... Let me ask, though. Do y'all have anything else to say? Is the... Okay. So, Councilman, it's your turn.
All right. Thank you, Chair. So I'm here both as the Councilman for the district, but I live here also. This is my neighborhood, and, you know, I started the Neighborhood Association, and, you know, I've known Mark all 20-plus years that I've been here. I called Sharon my Donaldson mom, so she's largely responsible for me standing here as Councilman in a lot of ways. I really don't understand totally the conflict of interest that she's talking about here. I'll tell you my concerns here is that... Well, first off, I've never dealt with a reserved parcel status, so this has been an educational process for me. And I've gotten, especially when those postcards went out, I've received a bunch of calls from my neighbors. What is this? What's going on? So the concern I have is it seems like it's a backwards process, right? So we're saying that unless you all find that the parcel fits into the character of the area and is consistent with the general plan, well, how do we know that the parcel fits into the character of the area? I mean, I heard that, but what kind of house can you put on here that fits into the character of the area and fits into the general plan? And that's really what my concern is. Now, I did hear that agencies, I believe all agencies are okay with this. That's the one issue, all due respect to the tissue, that stormwater has an issue. As you saw the conservation area here, the FEMA maps that have been updated since May of 2010 show that I believe that if you were to develop this parcel, you would have to go to the BZI to get side and set back variances. Then you'd have to go to the stormwater committee in order to get some variances to put a little bit of concrete in a floodway buffer. Those are the things that I would like to see us have some knowledge of and that will help effectuate a decision before we just remove this reserved parcel. So I'm not against anybody developing their lot. lot, absolutely, but I'm representing, obviously, just as councilman, but also my neighborhood that has many concerns about, well, what kind of house can we approve here? What would it look like? Would it fit into, into the character? You know, the whole thing with the park, yes, it's absolutely been a discussion and a goal of my Neighborhood Association that ultimately we would like some sort of gathering area. I don't know that this, this can work out for that, so I don't know where this whole conflict of interest thing comes in, but those are my points and my concerns about this, and so it, it's an educational and productive conversation here that if we remove it, then what? Is it automatically developable and then you can sell it to, to somebody and then they have to go through all these processes through, you know, through codes and maybe go to the BZA, maybe go to Stormwater? I mean, I'm trying to avoid all that and try to get some of this due diligence done beforehand before we remove this reserve clause, and then we have to, the, the neighborhood has to go through this battle basically of determining whether this parcel is developable within the character of the general plan and, and the suburban maintenance policy that's on it. So those are my concerns. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I think the public hearing close. Council lady, you want to go first?
Thank you, Chairman. I would love to go first. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you, can you put back up the slide, running the math? Sorry, I'll put in the CIB that we can have our own push button back and forth. No, one more that had the, like, numbers.
Lisa, she said math, I think.
Math, yes.
Not math.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Math is hard and masks are hard. I was trying to find the map. Okay, so I guess my question is, so I know we usually look at, like, right there. Is there a reason why we didn't look, and I got so disoriented when she said north was to the, to the left of it, and so we've, these numbers are to the left of it, but we, so like, okay, that's good. That's fine, that's fine.
Okay, so what we used, this is better.
Okay.
So the, the language in the subdivision regulations is as general as it is. We, we, that's why we put it on the screen there. Instead, does it meet the character and the general plan? And so staff took sort of a narrow view and looked at the properties north as you're traveling along Bermuda on this same side of the street.
Okay.
And then we also looked at across the street and then traveling north along Bermuda. And that was just the area that, that we sort of chose because this lot is oriented towards Bermuda, and so we were looking sort of narrowly at that as the area, but you can, you can broaden it and look at a, at a larger area.
So when you say across the street on Bermuda.
Yeah.
Looking at, that looks like 168 north, or did you go around the curve?
We went north past the intersection, past the street crest line and continued up Bermuda.
But y'all did not go down.
We didn't go down and around the curve. We kept it on Bermuda, primarily the part to the north.
Okay. Y'all know how I, I argue on these, these subdivisions and which way they should look and which houses and lots we should count, and so I'm just going to hand it off to my fellow commissioners to, to make the argument tonight of, of which lots we should look at before I weigh in a little bit more.
Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you. So just clarifying a question to Lisa. In this map, so the, you know, gray is the prop, you know, subject property. So let's say the next one or next one, you know, any of those are the adjacent property, say it's vacant, and that's RS10. If anybody want to come and build the house, they have to follow exact guideline appropriate for the single-family RS10, correct?
So they would have to, if, if, if a parcel was vacant and they wanted to come in and get a building permit, they would have to meet the, the bulk standards. So for RS10, they're going to have to meet certain setbacks. Front side, rear, rear's 20. Front is typically contextual to keep you in line with the existing homes. They would also have to be limited to three stories, which is general across all of our RS districts, and then they would have lot coverage, those sorts of things. It's not going to get into any of the design, but it is just going to be the bulk and mass. And so, yes, any, any vacant lots in the neighborhood that are current building lots would have to meet those standards.
Thank you. So the reason I ask is if we remove the reserve, it will be regular vacant lot, so existing lot. So it's not specific, it's not, nothing special. So having established that, I would like to take a look at, you know, the circular property diagonally across the street. You know, those property are much smaller, 23,000 square foot, and we did take a look at, you know, another subdivision. It's not the, like, pulling the reserve, but if we see the subdivision, is it appropriate, meets a general neighborhood? I think in that comparison, this site is precisely meet general area and precisely meet, you know, RS10. Only concern is backside is, you know, floodplain, but when somebody build the building permit, they have to follow precisely, you know, court recommendation and, you know, extra setback and extra height to, you know, minimize flat list. So I think, you know, as far as subdivision regulation and meet the general guideline, I think this lots meet with the guideline. So I am not in favor of disapproving it. I am comfortable removing the reserve in this particular lot.
Commissioner Sims. Commissioner Sims.
I agree with Commissioner Johnson. I think that, I went and looked at this piece of land and actually walked around it. It is a really challenging piece to build, but I think it does fit into the character, and if somebody wants to try it, then they've got a lot of hoops they still have to go through. So I find it, I want, I disapprove, I mean, I don't approve with what the, what the staff said, so.
Commissioner Haney?
I agree with my fellow commissioners before me.
Commissioner Haynes?
I agree with my commissioners. I think this needs to, the reserve status should be removed.
Vice Chair.
I agree, and I mean specifically supporting what Commissioner Johnson said. If, if we look down Bermuda the other direction, I think that, you know, we can establish that it's consistent with the, the broader area. But I also think what Commissioner Sims brought up, I mean, it's kind of in this current environment, the idea of approving any more buildable space and floodplains is a little bit nervous. It makes me a little nervous, but we'll deal with that if a proposal to build on this lot comes forth.
Commissioner Tibbs? You're the last. I'll make a motion that we actually approve. May I approve this part? And that it fits the character of the, it fits the general plan. The parcel fits the character of the area and is consistent with the general plan.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that motion. I appreciate that, Mr. Tibbs. We make such a good team. No, I appreciate that, Chairman. Is there a second? All right, there's a proper motion. Second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in, let's try this by voice. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. It's adopted. So now we're on to just a few. Thank you all very much for coming in, and thank you, Councilman. We appreciate it. So we're on other business. We're almost finished. Commissioners, we're almost, we're almost done. Historic, anything on historic? Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Chair. No report today.
Commissioner Haynes on parks.
Always exciting things to report from parks. We have another renaming request coming before us.
So you will keep hearing about another renaming going on. Executive committee report. We had a really good work session. I want to thank the staff, and the vice chair and I really appreciate the, the team and all the work they're doing on East Bank. So thank you all very much, and I, there'll probably be another work session coming up. I, I can't remember what Kelly and the director had told me, but forthcoming. So watch your emails. We try to get dates where we all can attend, so. Director, any?
Couple things. A small thing, we are, some of you may have noticed that we've completely, we being all of Metro have overhauled the website, and we are experiencing some growing pains, so I can, thank you Commissioner Johnson for helping me understand what was happening on the backend. We are ITS, we, we are no longer uploading our own materials. We will be soon. Right now, ITS is still managing the process, and I thank them. However, that means there's a bit of a disconnect between how we're doing our work right now, but I thank you all. I, I'm going to have some important updates for you in the next several weeks on our work on Second Avenue that I'm really, I'm really proud of. I think we've come a long way, and so I'll get with the chairman and figure out the best way to update the commission on that, maybe through an informational presentation. And then I do hope that you can make the next East Bank work session. We'd like to do a walking tour. This is a very unusual project for us because we are building in an area that it has, it has some development, but it is a very different context than what we're accustomed to working in, and so I'm hoping the commissioners can really see on sight the kinds of challenges that we're confronting right now. With that, thank you so much for your service and for being here tonight.
Thank you, Director. Legislative update?
I actually do, and I apologize. I really wanted to go on our last field trip, but I had a, a staff meeting for, we've, going virtual, so. Oh, you didn't even go? Oh, well, good, I didn't miss anything. Okay, so, well, legislative report. Regardless of what happened earlier this week, I had, over the weekend, put a lot of thought into, after reviewing the council agenda last Monday, I mean, for this past Tuesday, over the weekend, I had put some thought into just wanting to tell y'all kind of what is going on at the council. I've tried to do that before. I had given lots of kudos to the staff and to ourselves because things were running very smoothly. What, the trend that I am starting to see is that disapproved bills are going forward at the council. I have only served two terms, and Greg might be able to speak to this more, or Lisa, because they have been around longer than I have. I think that's kind of probably a typical trend at this point in a term, but it is concerning to me that council members are kind of brushing off the disapproval from this body. And so I think that at some point, y'all may want to have an internal conversation about how do we communicate to the council more, you know, than just Lisa doing the presentation of why did we disapprove it, or are there things that could have been worked on or something? I'm not sure what that answer is without brainstorming with y'all, but it is very concerning to start to see that number tick up of how many bills are disapproved or moving on to the council. So I just wanted to share that with y'all as I only have one more meeting with y'all after this, so I just wanted to kind of drop that bomb and tell you to think about it and let me know how it goes.
Thank you, and I do want to say we, we have really enjoyed our time with you on the planning commission. I want to say thank you for your extra effort, and it's, I know it's a lot of work and a lot of meetings, so I want to say thank you, and then being the, the chair of planning at the council level. So we really appreciate you very much. I know personally I do, and I know the other commissioners do as well, and we will definitely miss you. Can I make a motion that she can't leave? That she has to stay? Is that, is that a proper motion? As I told the counselor earlier.
Take that up with your council member.
Motion. You're out of order. You're out of order. All right, so, anyway, seeing nothing else, is there a motion adjourned? Word, Chair.